Sonoma City Council and Successor Agency. And also for Monday, June 18, 4:00 p.m.
Vice Mayor Harrington?
Present.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook? Councilmember Henley?
Here.
Mayor Aggermonte?
Here, and Mr. Cook is running late this afternoon. And I don't believe we have a closed session issue here. Do we say a, don't we say a pledge? Can we have a pledge?
Yeah.
How about we say a pledge of allegiance? Thank you. Thank you.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Gary. So approval of agenda, could I have your approval of the agenda?
We'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Harrington?
Hi.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook is absent. Mayor, Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Mayor Aggermonte?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, are there, I, are there any comments from the public? Having none, I'm closing public comment section. And I do have a dedication this eve, this eve, this afternoon. Ed Kenny, I'm sure you may all remember him, he used to visit us here in the council. I loved him, he was very cantankerous, which is the kind of person I absolutely love. I actu, and he actually went to, we both went to the same high school. He served on the board of the Sonoma Valley of the Moon Water District for 23 years, only giving up his seat after his illness in 2017. And let me see, I want to make sure. He leaves behind his only daughter Jacqueline Roush, two granddaughters, Brooke Kapanga and Samantha Roush, his sister Josephine Stark, and eight nieces and nephews. He is preceded in death by his first wife Henriette, his brother Matt Kenny, sisters Mary Shark and Beth Betty Ray, and lastly, his ex-wife Lorraine. So I wanted to close in honor of Edward Francis Kenny. I'm sure the fire department is very familiar with him. Wonderful guy, the kind of guy I love, kind of cantankerous and, you know, gives you the look. Thank you. So any presentations? None. Consent calendar, city council all, would you, I'm sorry, I'll let you.
All items listed on the consent, all items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council's staff or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. At this time, council may decide to change the order of the agenda.
Does anyone want to change anything on the calendar? We're good? May I ask the city manager, it says here, "Public hearing," and that's what we're doing?
Yes, this is a, this is a public study session on our budget.
So number six, regular calendar. City council review of the proposed fiscal year 2018-19 operating and capital budget for the city of Sonoma and the Sonoma Successor Agency. The city will hold a budget workshop to review, discuss, and provide initial direction to staff on the proposed fiscal year 1819 city of Sonoma operating and capital improvement budget. If our city manager would please let people in the public know about the mistake, I think we tried to do the best we can, but we actually started at four and I guess some information hopefully was put out and people didn't pay attention to it.
Yes, so thank you, Mayor Aggermonte. Our, the meeting was formally agendized through our civic web portal and everything went out last Thursday, I believe, announcing this meeting at 4:00 tonight for the budget work session. On Friday, I worked with our public information person to basically just put the web, put the budget on our, a separate budget webpage. And unfortunately, that e-news went out at 6:00, but in terms of a start. So, but the meeting is at a 4:00 start, it's been duly legally noticed and it went to everyone who normally gets agenda meetings with a 6:00, with a 4:00 start, excuse me. So I believe we are fine to proceed and apologize for that. We're just trying to kind of broaden the message out and had a mistake there.
I think Councilmember Henley would like to.
So I was Googling this meeting today because I was trying to figure out where it was. And on the, on civic web, it says four, but on the calendar, it said six. So I don't know, maybe at six, if anyone happens to walk in, even if they've missed comment, they could still say something.
Yeah, I think we can definitely do some accommodation there, makes perfect sense.
We'll have to make adjustments, thank you.
Yeah. All right, all right. Thank you, Mayor Aggermonte, council, members of the community. I'm pleased to present to you the proposed 1819 budget. This is part of our annual process to bring the council a budget to consider. Okay.
Dave is walking.
Great. And so in terms of, great, welcome. In terms of tonight, let me shift and kind of tell you a little bit about how we're going to try to proceed. So this is, we're going to try to be done by 8:00, do a kind of a compressed budget session and move through. Typically, we would kind of spend all day, we go through the budget, we'd have each department would present to you. As council knows, we've had a year that has not been a typical year, from the fires to a variety of other big projects to appeals. So as staff, I had hoped to be able to get this budget out to you in early June and with everything that's going on and FEMA reimbursements, et cetera, that was impossible. So we delivered it, I think, last Wednesday or Thursday night to you. And so we are here to kind of provide an overview. And so I'll be doing kind of the overview, well then, since 50% of the city's budget is public safety, police and fire, have asked our fire chief and police chief to give you a kind of a little more detailed overview of theirs and so they will walk through that with you. And then we're going to just basically kind of, kind of flip through the document and pull out some of the key changes in some of the general fund departments and the internal service funds. We'll talk, a look at the enterprise funds, water and cemetery. We'll have a focus on our capital improvement budget. And I do want to acknowledge this, historically, at least in recent years, Sonoma has not had what we in the business call a five-year capital improvement budget. We've had a one-year capital improvement budget. And as council knows, capital improvements take, a lot of times are multifaceted. It takes, might take a plant a year to do your design and then you've got to implement and you have to build money sometimes towards projects. And that, I think, it's very important to have a five-year plan. I want to thank our public work staff for putting together a five-year plan. Tonight, we're really going to focus just on this year, but I do think this is an important document and to use as kind of a foundation as we move forward and we may want to have more conversations with council and the community about what other things should be in this capital improvement budget. You know, are there things that are missing? If we don't have them here, we're not going to try to go, then we, if they're not here, then we're not out trying to find money and put resources together. So it's important that this be comprehensive. I want to ask, I would like to ask council, definitely do ask questions as we go through and then we'll have just time for your discussion and direction at the end, all right? So before starting the budget, I think it's important always.
I'm sorry, we did take roll call, should we, what, how do we adjust for Dave?
It just, it's reflected that Councilmember Cook has arrived and in the minutes it reflects that he's.
Thank you.
As council knows, we are in the middle of kind of redoing our council goals. And, but there were some, when we met in May, there were some key initiatives, for lack of a better term is what I'm going to call them now. They may get put underneath broader goals, but these were some areas of consensus where the council really wanted to spend some time over the next year. One was looking at some kind of a downtown parking and strategic plan. There also was a lot of interest in looking at the Highway 12 streetscape and traffic realignment and Broadway. This is looking at ahead of what maybe what could be done before Caltrans does their overlay, which I think is in 2020. There was also interest by council of looking at, how do we improve the Plaza and Depot and these wonderful assets that are getting a little tired and need some improvements? And also, if the city is able to do the lease with the Casa Grande parking lot, how could those pieces be connected? Housing continues to be an interest of council and you also know that we have our general plan update that we hope to start this next year in the urban growth boundary. And there was also interest by council on kind of a financial side and as council knows, we've been doing a lot of work in this area, but to also look at cemetery and what should we be doing both as an operational and financial analysis. So those were some of the areas where there was consensus from council and I have worked to include those items within the budget, as we'll see. This next chart, these charts I'm going to show you are either, are all out of the first part of the budget. This is out of the city manager message. And what this basically shows is talks about what our operating revenue is, about 18 million. It shows what are the transfers in, and this 677 is transfers in from the water fund with the cost allocation plan and the leases for the tanks. Council recalls, we talked about that recently. And then there is a transfer in from reserves to do some capital projects and one-time projects and we'll talk through those more later. So that the total sources in the general fund is about 19.5. And then the uses of those funds, our expenditures is about 18.3. But then we've got a transfer out and also a transfer out from capital because large, we definitely have some special revenue funds that help pay for our capital, but there's also a general fund investment in capital projects. And you see the total general fund, use of funds, our expenditures in 19.3. So what, overall, what that means, as you look at this, is there's about $160,000 where our revenues are greater than our expenses in this project. And we'll, we'll talk through this. I'm going to start with reserves because this budget does talk about using some reserves and I think it's always an important thing for council to understand where we, where we are. The city currently has nine, a little over $9 million in reserves and these charts are in the reserve section at the end, very end of the financial summary portion of your budget. And 50% of our reserves are the emergency reserve and operating reserve. So this is, the emergency reserve is 17% and the operating reserve is more for economic uncertainty. Let me tell you, sorry. If you look on page, you can fault, page 41 is a reserve? There's a summary chart in the city manager and then the more detailed chart is in the, is within the reserve portion of the financial section, which is on page 41. Is the pie chart in page 42 is the reserve summary. Okay? I'll try to call out some of the pages or ask Sue to help me that as we go through that. Okay, all right. So I think what's important to, some high-level things to think about in terms of our reserves is 50% of our reserves are these emergency reserves. The other 50% are what in our current reserve policy are called special projects, are, are within the special projects funds. These are funds that the, historically, the count, the city has used for non-reoccurring or kind of one-time expenditures for capital projects to surveys or studies, updated plans, temporary services, one-time things. And that's how you want to think about our reserves. So we currently have about 2.2 million that is not assigned and sits not assigned. The green shows about 1.5 that is assigned and this is like 500,000 for our general plan, another 516,000 that's been sequestered for the water rate study. Those are things that council has assigned in the past through your actions. And then what this budget does is say, out of that 9 million, I'm recommending there's about 730,000 that we take and we use for one-time projects or capital projects. Okay? This next chart shows some of these that are, this is also within the list of items and shows the one-time capital projects and I'm not going to go through these because the Colleen, our city, our city engineer will go through them. But these, there's about $579,000 of general fund investment coming from reserves to help improve assets and from streets to parks to facilities to improve the quality of life and capital investments. And then there are about $150,000 of one-time things. These are, one of them here, you'll see $30,000 set aside for a cemetery analysis the council was interested in looking at. There's also 20,000 set aside for pension study and analysis. And as, this will help us look at some kind of a pension stabilization fund. As we look at our fees, I think it's important for us to do kind of a broader update with our fees now that we have the cost allocation fund and can look at the indirect. And as David finishes our housing impact fee, we'll need to go back and change our housing, our inclusionary housing ordinance will also need to be updated. So this is some consulting assistance to help with those ordinance changes. Council approved $20,000 for our one-time to Sonoma overnight support. So those funds sit here as well, coming from the general fund. And there's about $15,000 in our base budget for emergency preparedness. And I've added about 10,000 to, for additional funding to help us as we work with our police and fire chief to move forward. And the last is 30,000, there's a one-time addition to our public works operating budget. And this is for, to really do an assessment of the trees at the Plaza. As council knows, we had a large branch come down about two months ago. And we have a couple of other trees we've identified as having rot and that need to be removed. But this will be a more overall assessment, working with arborists and doing some trimming and kind of cleaning up. So revenues, I'm going to turn this piece to Sue to kind of just give an overview of the revenues. And again, all of these charts are on the revenue section, which starts on page?
19.
Page 19.
Okay, so the city's major revenue sources, is my mic on? Are TOT, transient occupancy tax, property tax and sales tax, both the general and Measure U. So that, these major revenue sources, they comprise about 71% of our total general fund revenue. And then we have other general fund revenue sources, which include the emergency medical service revenue, which is ambulance billing, fees and charges for services, franchise tax and business license tax. So for fiscal year 1718, we're projecting, or we did project our total general fund revenues to be at about 17,400,000. We've actually gotten some information in the last couple of days that, so it'll be a little bit more than that. But we, the state has, there was an article about the state reimbursing us for the property taxes that were taken away for, that was the 65,000 that they took for the property taxes. And, let's see, I can't remember. Anyway, we've gotten some, some information, so our revenue will, will increase a little bit for 1718. So this total is a little bit low, below fiscal year 1617, but that is because of the impacts of the fire. So for fiscal year 1819, our revenues are projected to total 18,700,000. And this is an increase of about 1.37 million or over, almost 8% over the 1718. And about half of this revenue growth comes from increases in fees and charges for services. That's the reimbursements for development fees that we're projecting. And then also increases in transfers, transfers for the implementation of the cost allocation plan. And, and then we're, we also are talking about the use of the special projects fund for one-time special projects. So the TOT, for fiscal year 1718, we budgeted about 3.9 million. But with the October fires, there was a loss of TOT revenue in both October and November and that totaled about 250,000. So, and then, so this year, we're estimating TOT to come at 3.9, 3,950,000. And that's, it's about the same as we had budgeted for 1718, a little bit, a little bit of an increase. But this year, MacArthur Place is starting a major renovation and so they're renovating all their rooms, their spa and their restaurant. However, when the rooms come back online, they're going to, the room prices are going to be higher. So we're, we're still keeping it pretty much flat, not saying that there'll be a decrease in TOT because as the room comes on, it'll be at a higher price. And so we'll take a look at it mid-year and see how we're doing, but we think it's going to be about the same, so. And then sales tax. The State Board of Equalization collects local sales and use tax revenues from retailers and remits it back to the cities and counties. So for Sonoma, the sales and use tax rate is 8.625%. And this includes the base state, state sales tax rate of 7.25. And a large portion of that goes not to us, but to different portions of the state and counties. So, so 1% of that, of that tax actually comes back to the city. And then a little bit more from, we get a little bit from the public safety proposition 172 tax. And for 1819, we're projecting that to be about 135,000. For 1819, we're projecting the revenue to be, from the base sales tax, to be about 3 million. And this is a slight increase of 1.1% over projected 1718. So the 1718 revenues are coming in again, is slightly lower than we had projected and that's because of the fire and those are the impacts of the fire. For 1819, the growth in the construction sector and rising grass prices are expected to increase, to increase the sales tax. Then we also have Measure U, which was approved by the voters in 2016 for five years. And that's not as volatile as a regular sales tax because it's, it's, we, we get the online sales, local, local online sales, and we also get out-of-town auto sales to local residents. So, and then at the Measure U, sales tax revenue is projected at 2.3 million for 1819 and that's up about 6.8% over fiscal year 1718 actuals, so. And then the other major revenue source, property taxes. And it's, it's, it's really based on the economy right now, where the economy is doing pretty well and, and property taxes are increasing and they've been increasing based on really the economy and sales. So we're projecting for fiscal year 1819, a total of 3.9 million and that's 21% of general fund revenue. So currently, the largest portion of each property tax dollar goes to local school district and then the next largest portion goes to Sonoma County and we get approximately 18 cents of every property tax dollar. Even the property tax for 1718 is projected to come, be at 3.7 million and it's coming in about 5% higher than budgeted. Then our other major revenue sources, the EMS revenue, which is the ambulance billing. It's been on a steady increase and it's sometimes hard to project that because that's just people calling for an ambulance. But just based on history, it's, it is increasing and we're projecting it to increase for 1819 to 2 million. And then the user fees and charges for services, I've got a little bug over here that's. And again, we talked a little bit about that, but the, the major increase in the user fees is the, the charges for services for development that we're going to, that we'll be coming to council with to approve that. And then we also have a fee schedule, the last fee schedule that we approved was done in February 2017 and we'll be coming back to council after we do the user fee study to look at those fees as well, so. Other sources were our business license tax and we've had a little bit increase in the business license tax based on improved enforcement, where they're going out to business licenses and making sure that we're getting all the revenue that we should from them. Franchise tax, that's collected, the city grants franchises to local or to like agencies like gas, electric, cable, TV, telephone, and we get a portion of those taxes. And that for 1819, we're seeing about 250,000. And then the other revenues and those include licenses and permits, real property transfer tax, interest and rents and grants. And we've actually moved all the grants back into the CIP programs where the, where they'll be funding them. So it looks like there's a slight drop in, in other revenues, but it's actually because that we just put the grants back into the other CIP funds.
So thank you, Sue. Let me, so we talked about kind of current revenue. There are some changes in this year's budget that are reflected in terms of revenue. One thing, first is planning fees. So as I've looked at what, and Sue's looked at what we charge, collect from planning, historically, we've collected about $60,000 a year for, this is for basically charges that developers pay for fees for the processing of their development projects. And the reason we have fees for development projects is because the general taxpayer should not, should not be subsidizing, I believe, the cost of what in, when a developer is taking a project through. Those costs should be borne by that development project. And so our fees have been more flat fees and the industry standard is to have what's called, for your larger projects, to have a deposit and then you're charging actual time. And that's not been what our approach has been. So we've had a consultant look at what, and work with David to review kind of hours and, and the different projects and where they are. And that cost recovery analysis is sitting at about 95% done. And what it basically shows is that we could be collecting probably 500, 600,000 if you wanted to do 100% cost recovery. You're not going to get there, since we've been probably, I would argue, under 10% cost recovery. We're not going to jump that far. But if we move forward and really deal with those big projects that, and have developers, which they're used to paying in other places. Every, every agency in Sonoma County has cost recovery, except for Sebastopol, is my understanding. And so what we've done is we've put in, on top of the 60,000 we've normally gotten, an additional 340,000. And then with that funding comes an ability to hire some additional planning staff to help move projects along. And so there's $100,000 budgeted for that, whether it's part-time employees or contractors, to be determined. And there's also 50,000 too, that would help cover the costs of our legal staff that also is involved in these types of projects. Sue talked about the fee study. And the other item is potentially, if the council, you all had talked about this last year and wanted to put the TOT increase on, but we had to wait until an election in November 18, when council members are running for election. That is the time that, outside of an emergency, that a city can bring forward a tax measure to the public. So this is a place I want confirmation from council that you want to continue. If so, we would bring to you on the July 23 meeting, a revenue measure for you to take action on. You can see by the chart here, we currently sit at, there's a base amount and then a number of agencies have tourism improvement districts or business improvement districts. But if we just look at the base amount, because that's what comes to us as a city to fund general services, we're currently at 10%. And you can see those middle two columns show the majority of both NAPA and Sonoma agencies sitting at 12. If you recall, the hoteliers came 40 years ago and said, "You should move to 12%. It's not going to affect our business, everyone else is at 12%." But we had to wait. And what's interesting is the, the, there are a number of the NAPA folks that are considering going above the, above the 12%. Those conversations are occurring over there. And Healdsburg is already at 14. So this will be a policy call for the council to decide and we can talk further. The other new revenue that will be coming is Prop 68, that was passed in the June election. That means $200,000 a year to our city for parks, which is great because we've not kind of had a dedicated source of revenue to improve our parks. So that is, we've put, we've not put any money in for 1819 because we don't know by the time they sell the bonds whether we'd get money this year, but it's definitely something for the next fiscal year that we could probably look at programming. Okay. Rebecca said Sebastopol's also looking at a measure for TOT as well. So those are some revenue. Before I leave revenue, are there some questions or comments from council, thoughts?
Is now when you'd like us to opine over the TOT increase?
Is now when you'd like us to opine over the TOT increase?
Sure. Happy to, no, that would be now, what's fresh and we can, sure, please.
So I still definitely support going up to twelve and considering, I think, a lot more people are gonna be moving towards fourteen percent to go. Oops, hello, hello, public. So I support twelve percent, would even consider fourteen percent, but I know that there is a concern amongst the hotels of having a TOT that is too high during the off-season because that's when our savvy conferences are shopping around. So my question is, if it's possible to have some sort of variable rate where in the summer it's higher and in the off-season it's lower because that's when we're trying to get more people in anyway. But I would consider going up. And if it was as high as fourteen percent, we're looking at one point five million, which is, actually makes a difference. So I see the concern about going too high, but if there's a way to go around that, and I think that would probably be for something for legal to look into.
So I have a question for you, Kathy, on your five hundred K per year from development fees. Considering we're not really developing anything these days, what's your forecast and how much inventory do you think we have and how many years do you think we could achieve five hundred thousand dollars in income? Keeping in mind that we haven't approved anything.
Yeah, well, so there's two different things. There's you are, you know, developers are paying for the processing of their application. So whether it gets approved or not, the question is, at some point, do folks not come forward because maybe, you know, they don't believe it's possible to get something approved? I've seen cities where that reputation can occur. But here, as we've looked at, I mean, again, the consultant said you could go up almost over to six hundred and sixty. I wasn't comfortable going that high, which is why I'm kind of looking at four hundred thousand and looking at some of the projects that we've got going forward. So, and we would obviously be teeing this in to look to see how much do we, what actually, how much can we absorb?
So, but I think we already have that reputation, and then you can, so if we're gonna ask a developer to put up X amount of dollars, and then you can just drop a developer in their tracks for four hundred bucks on appeal, how do we, do we refund that money then? How do we, what do we do?
So one of the questions on appeal, this will be a policy question when we bring the cost recovery fees to the council, because an appeal is one of these development-related projects. Most, I would say, most agencies keep a low threshold on appeals because they wanna kind of keep, you know, developers tend to have more money than maybe a general member of the public who may want to bring, appeal something from Planning Commission to council. So as a kind of a good governance, democracy, most councils leave it lower. I have heard that there's other places might be that may have to bring in a certain number of, number of names, like a petition, or maybe you raise it a little more.
Registered voters.
Registered voters. So there's, there are maybe some other things that could be, could be looked at, but the whole appeal question, I think, will be a policy question for council to look at. You know, the whole typically appeals, if something's appealed to the council, the developer's paying for the staff time associated with that. And that is typically the way it works in most agencies. And as you all know, when we have these appeals, it's kind of one step forward, two steps back, and we go through the process, and that's okay. But there is a, there's an amount of staff time it takes to prepare and make sure that the questions in the appeal are answered so that it comes forward to you and you all have the most informed information you can to make that decision. So it will be a policy question for council on where do you wanna set that appeal fee? And is there any other kind of parameters you wanna put with it?
And then I'll just add to the, on the TOT, I think twelve percent is, makes sense. I would be open to a variable, but I think there's a lot of people bailing out of some of the major cities because of, you know, if you go to San Francisco, there's about, the fees cost actually more than the hotel in a lot of cases. And if we get that reputation, I think that would be a negative as well. And I'd like to see, you know, more encouragement with the TID, which is filling in, filling these hotels. I think we need to be very careful how we build that rate, so.
Do I have any comments? David or?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and weigh in on the, the TOT. I do support going to the voters for two percent. Because one of the questions I had is, I would like to see in graphs like this, the TID included, so we could see what the total would be. Because I, one thing that's confusing for me is like Sonoma County's at twelve percent. Do they have any TID?
They do. They have a, I think it's two, I don't have the chart with me. I think it's two percent on top, but there you, yeah, so they have a, they, and then, for example, Santa Rosa is part of the county TID, but they also have their own TID. So every, every place is a little different and not, as you know, we don't belong to the county TID. We have our own local. So I do have a chart that shows that. Be happy to send that to council.
Yeah, because I think it would make sense for the city of Sonoma to keep up with what's going on in unincorporated Sonoma County.
Well, one, I just had a question about public comment. So are people gonna comment on this topic since we basically are taking a straw poll before public comment?
Yeah, I was just, I appreciate you raising that question. So we should probably, you know, kind of get some general feedback from council, but then on this topic, we'll take some, we'll actually take public comment as well.
Okay.
And the plan, I'm sorry, the plan was to open it again for public comment, especially because of our situation.
I just saw Mr. Saperstein here, and I thought perhaps he would be making comment on this topic. I don't, guess that. I would support raising it certainly twelve, two percent to twelve. Maybe a happy medium is raising it thirteen percent. I don't think that we wanna go back to the voters over and over on this issue. And so I think that if we're, if we're raising it to whatever everyone else is at, probably everyone else is gonna be raising theirs around this time, and we'll be behind again. So I think it makes sense, I think thirteen percent makes sense. I'd also wanna talk to people in Healdsburg and find out, has their fourteen percent had any negative effects on the hotel industry there and see how that works.
So I, I'll comment on that. Norm Krug actually said his hotel in Healdsburg is suffering from the higher TOT when he was, he spoke, he was in the TID meeting, and he did say that it does affect him. I do support the additional two percent. And I think Norm Krug also said, and I think you, you hinted at it as well, when you get to the group sales, it really takes the numbers way out so they can't compete. So I think that was something that he mentioned, which I think is really important for us all to hear. The other, of course, was, the other issue, oh gosh, was the appeals. I have my own personal feelings on appeals. I, I think, you know, something, obviously, as Gary shared, you know, we're not even developing anything. Well, that certainly is necessarily not because of us. We, you know, I'd love to be able to get someplace closer that we work together and solve these things. And those appeals are only four hundred and twenty dollars, I think. Possibly it's because it makes it easier for people to make an appeal. I think that's a good thing, you know, in America and, but, you know, and I do think that the fees that the contractors pay, I believe that, you're gonna do a study, is that right? So I mean, that'll give us a better idea of what's going on outside of this realm. Thank you.
About the appeal fee issue and cost recovery for planning, so I do think that developers should pay their own fees, and I think they're already used to doing this. And the developers I've talked to said that they would gladly pay for these things if it meant a smoother process or quicker process because in the end, you know, getting, waiting five, eight years to get an answer, they might as well have paid more money in the beginning to get a faster no. So I think that that's okay. And as far as appeal fees, I just know from my own experience that it's kind of a sensitive issue, and you actually can't try to recover from your repellent what the fees are because it is a democracy access situation. So I'm curious about this petition idea, but, I mean, that's just, it's just a part of the process that we have to deal with. People appeal, and they get to, and that's their right. But as far as, and I think that picking a conservative estimate as to what that could look like is smart because, I mean, despite the lack of approvals over the years, people still keep trying, and I think that's on them, and it shouldn't be on the people.
I also didn't comment on that. I absolutely support bringing forward cost recovery and looking into that. And I think it should be noted that we haven't had frivolous appeals this year. In fact, two out of three were upheld. And so the super majority of appeals were upheld by this council and that, you know, I think that they all, even the one that wasn't upheld, people had reasonable issues that required study. So I don't, in terms of trying to make it harder for people to bring forward valid complaints, I don't want any part of that, and I hope we don't go in that direction.
So you, we would be able to recognize, just the difference between valid and frivolous, possibly?
What I'm saying, we can't judge it until we hear it on its merits, but I'm saying, if people were bringing numerous frivolous complaints, then I would see that we would need a remedy, which would be making it more difficult to bring forward frivolous complaints. But based on the track record of this council, of the three appeals that came before us, two of them were upheld. So we don't have a history here of frivolous appeals. We have serious issues that require deep thought and study. And even on the one that was not upheld, I think they brought forward a lot of serious issues about the parking and traffic associated with the Lodge Hotel. And then we've subsequently found out that the Lodge was not in compliance with their use permit. There were a lot of issues on that complaint that we learned from. And so I just don't, I don't think that we have a problem with frivolous appeals, which making it more difficult to appeal would be solving a problem we don't have. So I don't think we should do that.
I just wanted to ask the question.
Yeah, so this was, this is a topic you'll have time to chew through when we bring the cost recovery and we can look at it more, and look at it in more detail, and council can provide their perspective and direction then. So let me, public comment, is there any, anyone who would like to speak on the revenue piece on? Carrie?
Hi. Just in regards to the TOT tax and, you know, conversations that I've had with the hoteliers as well, definitely, and I think they're all in support of the two percent increase, and we'll definitely, you know, back that support. It would be interesting, as you said, Amy, to look at maybe what are other cities looking to do, you know, in the next year or two, so maybe, again, we don't fall behind as well. As far as, you know, the higher TOT tax for the hotels where it does hurt them, as Norm was saying, Madeline, it really was in regards to group business. He really felt at his Healdsburg hotel that group business was suffering somewhat because of the higher TOT tax that they have in Healdsburg. And that is something that is definitely a huge concern to all of us, because group business is definitely that one area that we have room for growth in, in mostly in the off-season times, Sunday through Thursday is when they do all those meetings. So the idea or concept of, you know, being able to make it a variable, I don't know the legalities of anything like that, is an interesting thing to look at. So I think that's worth it to look at that, see if that's even a possibility at all. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you, council. This is something we'll explore. So this is an item, I think, that I wanna explore some options with council. You know, the question, the variable rate, the other question, can you do a two percent, and then two years later have an additional one percent go in? There could be a way of doing a staggered. Again, I do think we've gotten behind and how to maybe not do that, and yet not lead the pack, but not get behind. That's a sweet spot, I think, we're all looking for, and maybe there's a way to do that. So moving on in terms of just a brief overview of expenditures, within the budget message, there are a couple of things that are outlined here. And I apologize, I say I didn't finish a thought on the slide, but in terms of the budget message, it talks about some of the key things, and I wanna go through this. One, in terms of kind of protecting Sonoma's community character and quality of life, we've got some additional money for emergency preparedness. And then we've got about ten thousand dollars, and we've got money in for Plaza and Depot Park and neighborhood parks, and I'll let Colleen go through that, and street maintenance. And then some funding for this parking strategy. I've also put in about ten thousand dollars placeholder to look for a firm who can help us. There are a couple of these technology firms that are really good at capturing information through Google Analytics about illegal vacation rentals, using really some powerhouse kind of technology that can help us then have the data to be able to go out and track the illegal vacation rentals. So this is a piece that would basically work arm-in-arm with code enforcement. It would give code enforcement, I think, the greater tools and information that they can then do the follow-up. And they're not trying to do kind of the Google searching, because I think there are, there's just computer programs that are doing this far more efficiently. Colleen will go through the investing in infrastructure and maintenance, and she's got that piece. In terms of supporting housing, there's basically some funding set aside in reserves. There's thirty thousand still sitting there for the accessory dwelling unit fee waiver program, and twenty thousand for some strategic education sessions, or if we have a council subcommittee that's working on that, that can flush that out and see if there's the need. That's not programmed in the budget, sitting there in reserves, kind of to be held. There's also some funding David put in his budget for, to finish the inclusionary housing ordinance, and then also twenty thousand for a one-time Sonoma overnight support, which you all approved. And then in terms of kind of developing our organizational capacity and communications, as council knows, we kind of cobbled some money together for the second half of this year to have a part-time webmaster and someone doing social media. And this would basically be creating ongoing funds to do that. There's initial about ten thousand dollars to have our special event manager work on a couple of things. One is film permits. We've got a lot more film permits. It's actually a fee we need to look at because I think those fees could be adjusted. Both film permits, helping with city events, and then also the art, the temporary art in the plaza. This person's helped do all the choreography of that and support the CFAC. They've got some ideas on kind of art events and things they wanna do. So it's a fairly minor increase to really build a support, really kind of some of those arts and some of our special events. Again, the hundred thousand dollars from some additional planning staff, that comes out of the cost recovery. And there's, I wanna say, ten to fifteen thousand dollars or so for mobile tablets for both public works and buildings, so that when they're out in the field, they can be putting data straight in and being more efficient, not coming back in. And then working on some of the financial responsibility and best practices, obviously we'll be, this next year, be finishing our water rate study, so there's some carryover there, implementing that cost recovery. We're looking at restructuring the city prosecutor services over the next year, looking at some of the kind of the core pieces such as DUIs and things that that city prosecutor handles to shift some of that to the district attorney. We're also bringing council-based, in your direct instruction, an administration, administrative citation fine program. We've talked about in terms of our pensions, this is a place that we wanna look at probably some type of a rate stabilization account and look at some strategy with pensions. I've investigated a couple of consultants who can help us do this, and so there's twenty thousand in budget to move that forward. It's a very important cost that we need to look at and manage. Cemetery analysis, council really wanted to look at our cemeteries and what do we do there? This, I think, is an area we can try to bring some outside expertise in, and then also updating our reserve policy. Well, our, if you remember, our water fund did not have set reserve policies. That's part of what we're putting in place, and so we can bring all that back in one package. This is within the budget also. It talks about expenditures per category, and again, police and fire being the greatest, so we'll have them provide it over to you here shortly. This looks at the breakdown of expenditures by program and department, and again, these are in your, in your budget document. This chart here shows about what, looks at our pension cost projections, and you can see we're going from about six hundred thousand going up to almost one point, over one point six million projected in twenty-three, twenty-four. So these are costs similar to what a number of public agencies who were in PERS are receiving. And as council knows, even though we no longer have police and fire, we continue to have employees that are drawing benefits, and therefore, past employees, I should say, and therefore, we have, as PERS does not meet its investment earning reports, and they have not been, and they've also been ratcheting down their assumptions and changing their mortality rates. There's a variety of things that they've done that will be good in the long run, but at this point, all of those decisions, those costs are being shifted to the employer. We have a labor management team that we'll be working with and to look at our cost, our pension costs and cost sharing, and our employees already pick up one percent of those costs. And I think it's just as we look at pensions, I think one thing that's a little frustrating, I think, for Sonoma overall, is this community and this past councils who sat in your seats have been careful. is this community and this past councils who sat in your seats have been careful with pensions. They didn't give enhanced benefits to general miscellaneous employees like a lot of other cities did. They didn't do retiree medical. A lot of cities have tens of millions of dollars of retiree medical and this council and past councils didn't. So there's been a variety of good decisions made by this council. Unfortunately, as PERS looks at their and makes changes with their investment earnings and really digs out of their huge loss that they still haven't recovered from in the, from the last recession, we are sitting in a place where we have, as an agency, have unfunded liability, which are increasing our costs. So this is, this will be a big project for us over the next year. I mentioned, I walked through some of these staffing changes. This just shows you where the, where our percent of our staffing is and some of the different places we'll be looking. I should mention one other item. There also is in budget this year. As council's aware, there is a need for some additional project management and analytical assistance in the city manager's office. At this point, I felt it was important to put some funding in, so I've put $50,000 of contracting funding in. In a perfect world, there would be another position who could help drive some of the projects and initiatives that the council wants and move things forward. But until there's some additional revenue, I was not comfortable moving forward with another pension position and another full-time position, but I did put some contract dollars in to hopefully build assist on some special projects. I want to be a little cautious of time. I just wanted to let council know, there is a chart in your, in the expenditure section that also breaks down because of comparison between '17, '18. And if you look at just the overall expenses, it looks like there has been a, you know, a major, like a 10% increase. The reality is some of that is how we've changed how we're doing costing. So now, because we are using a cost allocation plan and people aren't charged directly to the water budget or the cemetery budget and some of these things, it shifts some of the funding back into the general fund. And we also have new fees that are paying for some of these items and then we have one-time money that's coming in. So if you look just globally, kind of operating to operating without the one-time, it's about a 2.6% increase. The budget message also talks about some constraints. We are constrained in terms of losing redevelopment. That continues to impact us. We don't have that $1.1 million for housing or $4.4 million for other capital projects. And it's tough within our thin general plan to support the capital improvement programs we need and we've talked about pensions. I think there are opportunities with the TOT, the cost recovery, the Prop 68. And then as we get a five-year CIP, we can go out and look for regional money and grants for bigger projects. So that's kind of the overview of the budget. And be happy to take any questions from council and otherwise we would move back to, move to public safety.
Under what circumstances would the city put out pension obligation bonds? When is that done?
So the city did public, did pension obligation bonds, I think, in 2012. And at that point, there was an analysis that showed that there was an overall savings where, because what they, the PERS had done a side fund. They'd set your unfunded liability, they'd assume that it was, it was flat, you're in it. They were going to charge us 7.1, I think, 7.5. So if we could go out and sell bonds and have it be cheaper, then it was that increment and it was less expensive and that worked in this round. I will tell you, it depends on how PERS does. Sometimes, my last agency, it worked well for one piece and the other piece, frankly, was not the city's interest to do. So it's a matter whether you can do better than what PERS thinks they can do. Lately, that's been true. It's not necessarily what's being recommended, because in some ways, you're taking your current unfunded liability and you're pushing it out. We're fortunate at this point that it did make financial sense for us. And I believe it's three years, our current pension obligation bonds will be paid off. That will free up about $400,000 and I think that's part of our pension strategy, is to think about what do we do with that $400,000. You could just return that, you know, and have additional funding to do programs or you could take a piece of that and put that towards some kind of a pension stabilization fund.
Thanks.
You have anything? No one? I just have something I'd like to share. This continues to be an issue for me. This packet relates in no way to anything in the book. I mean, the numbers don't match. You can't, if I, I read through this whole thing, made notes probably on one-third to one-half of these things. This doesn't help me. It's your presentation package. It doesn't help me at all. This does not match anything either. So, you know, I'm lost in this budget. I've read this thing, but I just want to let you know, I, I have issues with presentations that don't match what we have already studied. And I, you know, you've had to do this. I, I don't know how you could say, okay, page 16, then page 22, that's how it might have worked. But I prefer to do that because I make notes in these things and now I, I can't find anything.
So I apologize, Mayor Agamonte. I think that what I, knowing the council's had the budget and has, has been reading through it, part of what I'm trying to do is kind of do the overall overview for members of the community that maybe have not looked at the pieces. I, I agree with you, would have been helpful to have had like, where is this page in the budget? So that you could have cross-referenced and going forward, we'll do that. But the information is here. This is all in the first two sections. It's in the city manager report or it's in the financial summary. So.
Okay, I thought you just had to hear that.
Thank you. Okay, so let's go, let's go next to public safety and like to start off with our police chief. Okay, and we have to take a, can we take a brief one? We do have some sandwiches. And for council, while we set the next PowerPoint up, if folks want to go grab something. And we'll get the next PowerPoint up. Thank you. Grab a sandwich to eat. Thank you.
Five minute.
I'm reopening the meeting.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of the council and the general public. My name is Brett Sack. I'm the police chief here and I have the privilege of presenting with you our budget. But as Kathy mentioned, since we are the big portion of the budget, we thought it'd be nice to maybe go back and give a little history of how we got to where we are today. So I will be going off the PowerPoint. I apologize for the PowerPoint, but that is, I think, the best way to kind of present this information. Before I get started, I wanted to point out two very special people to me in the audience. One is Heidi Keith and the other is Marta Peavy. They're both from the Sheriff's Department's fiscal team. And they really are the brains behind the numbers. I just get to present them. So I'll do the best I can to explain them, but they're here to answer any questions if need be. Also, I am old, so I have to wear glasses now. I apologize for that.
Are your arms getting shorter?
So anyway, a little bit of the history here. So let me see, there you are. So what a lot of you probably don't know because you haven't been on the council this long, but actually the city of Sonoma and the sheriff's office have a long history of contracting together in a partnership. It goes back to 1994 when the city of Sonoma decided to contract out their dispatching services with the sheriff's office. So that was way back in 1994. In 2003, the city kind of launched a feasibility study regarding contracting with the sheriff's office for law enforcement services in addition to their dispatching services. And there was a lot of reasons for that. I wasn't involved in the direct negotiations, but I've been around during those times and I've read a lot of documents. But ultimately, it was, I think, driven by a couple of things. One is the financial uncertainty of the time, particularly as it related to the economic downturn, as well as 2003 is kind of when we launched the enhanced retirement system for police and fire. And so there was some unfunded liability that they were concerned about. In addition, they had been struggling to fill vacancies and retain staff, which is not uncommon necessarily for small police departments to, they always seem to kind of have staff turnover. So they were interested in trying to find a better way to provide kind of dedicated services to the city. They also wanted to improve the level and quality of the service that they were providing to their citizens as part of their goal. And during that study, they discovered that contracting not only makes sense, but also has a bunch of other added benefits. Some of them are listed here, of course. Access to significant patrol resources in the event of, you know, major events such as Fourth of July and other things. Specialized services, which really has been a big, big part of this year, right, with their three critical incidents. So specialized services, detective bureaus, subject matter experts in a lot of the very technical portions of law enforcement, such as property evidence management, dispatching, of course, records management, fiscal, personnel, you name it. Significant reduced liability for the city for critical incidents because under the agreement, majority of the liability falls upon the sheriff's office because the policies we're operating and the training standards are all coming out of the sheriff department. And then, of course, a reduced workload for other city staff, right? So they don't have to have additional people in City Hall to do our payroll and do our hiring and recruiting, so on and so forth. So in 2004, the city did in fact sign the five-year contract with us. We initially started off the transition plan about hiring and training of the existing employees that were working at the department. We offered all of them an opportunity who were interested to come over and work at the sheriff's office and come back to Sonoma to work if they so chose. The initial staffing model of that contract was for 11 sworn people, a chief, two sergeants, and eight deputies. The sergeants were under a very unique blended supervision idea. The sheriff's department, of course, has a substation out in the valley. There were two sergeants out here, and so the sheriff and the city manager and the police chief at the time decided they can have maybe two sergeants in the valley and two sergeants in the police department and they could blend their supervision. So at any given time, they'd be responsible for all of the people who are working during their particular shift. It was a very kind of innovative way to provide a high level of supervision to both the city and the valley. The problem with the initial staffing with eight deputies is it required us to do a four-12, three-12 staffing plan in order to have two people on at any given time. You work four 12-hour days one week and four the next. The problem with that, we discovered, is it creates 84 hours of work every two weeks, which became an issue with the pension system because those hours were pensionable. And so we, after working with our retirement group, we decided it was easier to actually add staff to reduce it down to full 80 for the city and as well as the employee in the sheriff's office. So at the end of the contract, at the end of the five years, we looked at 13 sworn, so a chief, the two sergeants, which are still sharing with the valley, seven and 10 deputies, and 3.5 civilian staff, two of them are CSOs. We have an administrative assistant and, of course, a halftime clerk that shares with City Hall. As just kind of a snapshot, the prior police department's staffing allocation was 25.5 full-time people. That was 17 sworn and 8.5 civilians. And remember, that did not include their dispatching services, which they'd already dispatched or contracted out previously. So you can see just from that that the contracting model provides us significant savings in terms of just kind of staff requirements. It was estimated that during that first five-year contract, we saved $1.9 million to the city. And some of that was on projections, of course, because after five years, you had to make certain revenue projections and expenditure projections. But it was determined as about 1.9 million. And then in 2009, the city decided to contract out for a full 10 years, which brings us basically where we are here. We're in our last, starting our last year of our 10-year contract. So the new chief and the city manager and the council will have an opportunity to negotiate a new contract, which will hopefully start in July 1st of 2019. Over the last 10 years, here's some of the highlights, I think. First and foremost, I think we've provided the city a budgetary savings and stability. We have been at or under budget each and every year of the 10-year contract. The average contract increase is about 2.3% annually, which we think is reasonable. And as Kathy had mentioned before, there's a lot of discussions about PERS and pension systems. So the sheriff's department, as well as the fire department, were in a county retirement system. And so that system is far more stable, we believe. Currently is funded at 94%, as opposed to PERS is like 68, I think. And so the fluctuations have not been as significant for us. So for instance, in this contract, the county retirement contribution went up like 1.4% or about $14,000. So we think it's a pretty good deal in terms of not having kind of large-scale swings in your pension system. We've had a reduced workload for those city departments, as I mentioned before. Highly trained, competent, professional staff that work at the police department. Recently in this contract, we went to value-wide management of law enforcement, which we think was helpful during the fires to have kind of one person in charge down here, kind of coordinating all law enforcement resources. Of course, you still have access to significant resources from the sheriff's department, whether that's investigative units or specialized units. And as I mentioned previously, the reduced liability for the, for critical incidents. So the contract itself is kind of creates the framework that allows the relationship between the city and the county. And so every year, we're required to come up with a service plan. So how are we going to deliver services to the city? And so every year, that plan is developed. And I usually put it together. It's reviewed by the sheriff and reviewed by the city manager and provided that we're not asking for any significant increases and the council approves the budget, which would be covered by the service plan, then we implement that plan accordingly. So here is what the plan looks like. I'm only going to go over certain sections, but there's eight different sections. Staffing levels, schedules, position descriptions, what services and programs that we provide, training requirements, vehicle requirements, so on and so forth. And of course, the last one is performance measures. So what I'd like to do is just highlight just a couple of those. First and foremost, the staffing level and the shift design. As I mentioned, our current staffing level is 16.6 positions. 13 of those are sworn. One chief, the two sergeants, and the 10 deputies, 3.6 civilians, two CSOs, and 1.6 administrative staff. We do rely heavily on volunteers and explorers to kind of help augment and provide additional services to our residents. We would love to have far more VIPs. At one time, we were up to around 12 and now we're down to around four. But we're hoping to recruit some more from locally that we can get them out here helping us because it's a really phenomenal program for us. But even with our small cadre, they are a dedicated group and they come in almost every day and provide some service to us into the community. We also have support from the valley substation. As I mentioned previously, we share the two sergeants and also the school resource officer. So that position is actually housed at the valley substation. And even though we have an agreement with, the city has an agreement with the sheriff's office to provide funding for that, the bulk of the cost of that position lies with the patrol division at the sheriff's office. And we did that because it was the most economical way for us to provide that service to the city. Because if the SRO would have been a city employee, as you'll see later, we would pay overhead on his salary and benefits or her salary and benefits, and so there'd be an added cost. And this was the most economical way that we could provide that service to the city under the current design. So our current shift design is a very innovative three, four 11, three 11 plan. So each deputy works an 11-hour shift. They work four of those one week and three of those the next. That does provide maximum coverage with two to three deputies on at any given time, generally three during peak hours. And also it provides six dedicated training days, which we allow, allows us to provide training without having overtime costs. And the last one I want to talk about would be the performance objectives. There are four primary performance objectives in our contract. They are listed there. Deter and prevent crime, apprehend and prosecute offenders, maintain and resolve conflict, and then promptly respond to emergency situations. So the performance objectives are a way to kind of take a look at what we're doing to see what the trends are within the city in terms of kind of law enforcement and allows us to kind of make some educated decisions about how we want to deploy our resources or how we want to focus our energy. I'm not going to get into those because you're lucky enough to get me back later this week and I can go over all those during the annual reports. So let's just kind of go over the budget portion of it and I'll try to speed through this as quick as I can and make room for questions. But I think it's important to understand what is included in the contract. Ultimately, there are, there's a kind of a basic components, a salary and benefits, service and supplies. We credit the city with any offsetting revenue that we receive from either post-reimbursement, security fees, or grants. And then there's the sheriff's overhead expense, which I'll get into, explain a little bit more. But ultimately, the sheriff's overhead would be all of the people back at the main office who provide direct support to the city of Sonoma in some way, whether it's dispatching, records, property evidence, our training division, personnel division, so on and so forth. Those were agreed to back when we signed the contract in 2004. They were based upon the principles of A-87 cost allocation. It was reviewed by the county auditor at the time. It was considered to be conservative and consistent with appropriate practices. And we determined the overhead rate each and every year based upon a formula. And then the sheriff and the board of supervisors, I should give them credit, extends the city a 5% credit, provided they, I guess, pay on time, I guess, so. But that credit has always been given. So here's our baseline budget for the last three years, 15, 16, 16, 17. 17, 18, of course, is projected because we're not, we haven't closed the books. And then what we're proposing for 18, 19. I'll let Chance just kind of review that. The projected is substantially lower than we had anticipated. And part of that was because during the fires, we really felt that we had spent a lot of our time fighting fires and providing services outside the city of Sonoma. And so the sheriff was kind enough and he thought that was appropriate, that he didn't charge the city of Sonoma for any of our time, any of our time, during that two-week period. And it looks like we estimated that savings to be about $345,000 that he extended back to the city. So the 17, 18 projected would reflect that.
I have a question.
Yep.
Oh, I think the proposed 18, 19 overhead, 8.95. I'll just say it out quickly, but I think it's 13% more than the 16, 17 actual. Why, I think that's right, if I understand how to do math. Why is the, why has the overhead gone up by so much in two years?
So I'm going to take my first shot at it, and if you look over my shoulder and they're shaking their head, that means I'm not right, okay? But ultimately, overhead is based upon salaries and benefits of the people at the main office providing those particular services. And so during that particular year or those years, when we were taking significant cuts, the cuts to the programs were felt mostly in those particular programs, and so there was less staff. And so less staff means there was less overhead overall. The same service, but just, just less, less cost. And as we have added positions back, when the economy's gotten better, we've been adding them back into those administrative positions. Is that close?
Yes, particularly in... Heidi Keith, I'm the administrative services director for the Sonoma County Sheriff's Office. Particularly in our personnel unit, we had during the recession pretty much decimated that and got so far behind in our hiring efforts that we were struggling to keep deputy sheriff positions filled. So we added the positions back. We not only added them back to admin, we increased them so that we keep up the hiring effort. Additionally, we did quite a bit in the area of community engagement and we added positions there, which also affected the admin overhead.
So like in terms of a countywide community engagement staff person, how does that affect or benefit the town of Sonoma?
Generally, with any of the safety kinds of messages that we're sending out, any of our crime prevention efforts that we're doing generally for the unincorporated area of the county, there is much of that that can be then applied to the town of Windsor, which we also contract with, and the city of Sonoma.
Maybe I could ask, what does a community engagement person do?
So our community engagement liaison is the individual that we have assigned with going out into the community, making those contacts with different community-based organizations and liaising between our office, the sheriff's office, and through the sheriff's office, the contracts with those community organizations, trying to open lines of communication, sharing information, explaining why we do what we do. In general, helping us become more incorporated with the communities that we're working in.
So then here are CSOs do that work, but they use the materials developed. Do they do that here in Sonoma?
Correct.
Thanks.
Yeah, and I can maybe add a couple more pieces to that. So also that includes the PIO, the sheriff's PIO, Public Information Officer. So we use that person frequently and we've used them a lot in the last, the last three or four months. So they craft a lot of the press releases that go out. They also are the kind of always managing kind of new campaigns in terms of click at our ticket or hey, this is a distracted driving month. And so they're kind of helping develop that materials for us, which we pass out through our social media as well. And they run the social media sites for us, which we contribute quite a bit to, so yeah. So going into the overhead, this might be a little bit redundant, but there are basically kind of six areas that are identified in the overhead section of the contract. For simplicity purposes, in the calculations, two of them are combined because they're similar. But those are the six areas for which there are cost centers associated with supporting what we do out here in the city. Administration, of course, they have the expertise in fiscal accounting, payroll, personnel, dispatching services, of course, which is obvious. Central Information Bureau, which is our records management group. They also do a lot of our public records requests, crime analysts and prevention. So they're the ones who are putting together, all of our hot sheets are putting together, you know, the data site that allows us to kind of, you know, track criminals and that kind of stuff. And they provide quite a bit of support for us on that. Training, new training of deputies and staff. And then, of course, you know, there's not a sergeant here 24 hours a day. And so when there's no sergeant in the valley or the PD or even a lieutenant, watch commander, that responsibility falls back to the sheriff's office. So we always have somebody who's available to be in a supervisory role. So as I mentioned, this is, those six categories are reduced to four on this particular chart for simplicity. And you can see there's two in the front, the first one and two in the last one. And that's kind of a reflection, I believe. Vice Mayor Harrington, this is the document that you were referring to earlier when you saw the increase between 15, 16, and 16, 17. That's probably about a 13%. So these numbers reflect the 5% discount that the sheriff extends. A couple of things I want to point out. First and foremost, the dispatching number, which is interesting. So I pulled a staff report from 2003 when the city was contracting just for dispatching services. And at that time, the city council had approved a dispatching contract for $311,000 in 2004, 2003 to 2004. So here we are, what, 14, 15 years later, and our dispatching costs have actually gone down because it's now included as part of an overall overhead package. So that's, that's what our overhead looks like. And this is just kind of the history of the, of the contract. So what we've done is gone back, used actuals when we could, projected on 17, 18, and then what we're proposing for 18, 19. And you can see, not only is the dollar amount that has changed, but also the percent increase from year to year. If you add those all up, it comes back to about 2.3% per year on average over the last 10 years. The, it's a little bit hard to read and doesn't quite make sense. But for instance, I'm going to point out in 12, 13, the jump of 6.6%. It's a little bit of an arbitrary number, not arbitrary, but a little bit difficult to understand because if you see below, the year prior, we had come through concessions. So we were in economic downturn, and so the county negotiated concessions with all the labor groups. And so MTO stands for mandatory time off. And so all the employees basically had taken a cut in pay during that year. And so the next year, when it wasn't there, it kind of artificially shows a jump of 6.6%. And the same thing a little bit with the 18, 19. Of course, we're coming off of a, of a projection of having quite a bit of savings from the fire. So the jump of 6.6% is reflected there. But it actually is only, it's actually 1.2% less than what we'd anticipated we were going to be spending from the previous year, if that makes sense. So that kind of concludes my budget portion of it. I'm happy to answer any questions as best I can.
I have a question. The school resource officer, who is wonderful, of course. Does the school district help to pay for that position?
Yes. So it currently is funded, basically 33% is assigned to the city of Sonoma. 33% of the salary is assigned to the school district and then 34% is picked up by the sheriff's office. Sheriff's office also picks up their uniforms and their car and so on and so forth. So there's added costs associated with that. But yes.
Thank you.
And it's a great position and we're thankful to have it there.
Want to have any questions? David?
I guess my biggest question is for this year. Since I've been on the council, we've got the K-9 and we, I think the body cameras came right at the beginning of May. Is there anything else that the sheriff's office is looking at that is comparable to those two things this year?
So I don't, I'm not aware of anything that we're looking for major improvements for the next year. Of course, we're in our second generation of body cams coming out, so we're rolling those things out. The consortium, which is part of our dispatching group, is rolling out new mobile data computers, which is reflected in the, in the budget, as well as some additional savings associated with kind of the consortium stuff.
Yeah. Then the other thing, could you explain to me how the helicopter works? How many helicopters the sheriff's department has and how close they are to our jurisdiction and when would they be used?
Yeah, so great question. The sheriff's office has a helicopter. Matter of fact, I'm not even sure, Heidi could probably tell you all about it, but we just took delivery, right, of a brand-new helicopter, which was funded through the board of supervisors. It's a regional asset. And so there is a pilot into, a pilot, sergeant, a deputy, and then some emergency medical staff that are there. They budget for a certain amount of flight time per year, all right, based upon their calculations. And so they are available to cities who need them for critical incidents or for, for, yeah, surveillance per se, but more so like pursuits, vehicle pursuits, suspects who are running from them. They, once in a while, will do some routine patrol, but, but not frequently because it's an expensive proposition. Currently, we don't get charged for using a helicopter, which is great. There is a billing method in place to charge other agencies for helicopter time, but the city of Sonoma hasn't been charged.
Are there any other questions?
Two questions. One, this might be more for fire, but last year, I remember us talking about insurance costs going up, workers' comp. Is that on the police side too, or is that mainly on the fire side?
I can tell you what workers' comp will be doing, if you give me one second. So unless I'm misreading, and our workers' comp is dropping, dropping 60%.
60?
Yeah.
60 or?
Yep.
Seems like a lot.
Is that right? That's what the number says.
You going Geico or something?
The county's workers' comp rate is based on obviously a very complicated calculation. But one of the biggest things that drives whether it's going up or down is history. So as long as these guys stay safe and stay healthy, we should see those numbers drop. Sonoma went down. On the flip side, our patrol division went up. So it definitely fluctuates and it's really history that, that drives that. And of course, then the cost of the premium. But how it's spread is definitely based on historic usage.
So it's a better rating when you, you're good, everything's good?
When you're, when you're healthy and safe, then the workers' comp rate, I mean, it'll always stay at a base, but it's going to drop proportionately to our other units within the sheriff's office. And Sonoma has been very successful in staying safe.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Second question. Who does legal support for the sheriff's department? Is it county council or does it get outsourced?
Yes. So no, it's county council for the most part. They do have contact attorneys for, you know, big events, but most of the stuff we run through county council. The way it works for us is I generally will run a question through administration, which will run through county council, just to get an opinion if I have a question. If it has to pertain to like a city ordinance, for instance, the county council doesn't do that, of course. So I run it through the city's, the city attorney's office, but that's how we work it.
I'm thinking like when there's like a specific incident or something filed against a particular officer, is that something that's kept in the county council and they sort of go through the whole process of evidence?
So I would, I would say that like for instance, a lawsuit against one of our employees working for the city, yeah. So what would happen is generally speaking, county council would defend the office. So what would happen is, generally speaking, county council would defend the office. There are times, under complicated cases, that they might go out to a specialized attorney, attorney's firm, but generally speaking, they keep it in-house. I think that's a fair statement. Yeah. Generally, like, for instance, if there were some litigation to come out of one of these critical incidents that we've had recently, county council will, will basically notify REMIF, which is the city's risk provider. And REMIF will just simply open up a file. They don't spend any time, energy at all on it. They just track it. Ultimately, the city isn't, doesn't, hasn't had any liability, and so the county's been quite successful at defending us. So, yeah.
Okay.
I'm not sure who this question is for, but I guess I'm wondering, in terms of like a contract for services with a sheriff, is it typical to, I don't know if this is exactly a negotiation, but is it typical to do it every year? Does anyone have a multi-year contract where they just have the set increases? Because I would think that as the sheriff negotiates with labor, since we're not part of that, that it, it would be advantageous for the sheriff to have a sense of what we're able to and willing to pay instead. You know, I'm just wondering, are multi-year contracts done anywhere else in Sonoma County or other counties?
So, yes, my understanding is, is they are. I think those would be great questions, I think, to open up during the negotiations for the upcoming contract. And I think that's a very valid question. I actually believe, I think, like, for instance, American Canyon, I believe, has like a three-year contract with a set raise, or set cost. Interesting, I think it happened to be like 3%. So we look at us, we're at 2.3. So historically, we've, we've beat that. And every time there's been an opportunity to return savings back to the city, we've done so. So they have to just determine whether or not that's, works out well for both parties.
What you're saying, multi-year works out well, or it doesn't matter?
Well, I think there's risk both ways, right? So it just depends upon what the tolerance and the interest of the, of the people who are coming to the table are.
All right, thank you.
Well, I was just, as we move towards trying to have multi-year budgets, it might be helpful to us to have a known cost, whether it's like two years, or whatever the cycle of the budget is, probably, we would, I would assume we'd want to know what the cost was, more or less.
Yeah, I think it's something for us to look at as we look at the next, at this next contract.
Yep.
Any other questions? No comment?
You laughing at my glasses?
I think maybe like the Black, the Black Pops, or something like Gary's. Or Colleen's.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We're going to pull up fire next, but while we get that pulled up, thank you, chief.
Can I just add a sensitivity to Heidi and Marta? Do you think they'll be needed for any further questions, or can I? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Great. So now I'd like to ask Chief Sackett to come, Chief Sackett, sorry, Chief Baker to come up, and we'll talk about fire.
Good evening. I guess it's evening now. It's my pleasure to be here. Thank you, Madam Mayor, council, city staff, and both the present community and members watching at home. It's my pleasure to present to you the proposed budget for the city's contribution to the Sonoma Valley Fire and Rescue Authority's budget for 18, 19. Okay. So first, you're, you'll see some parallels here as I go through with what Chief Sackett did for the police department's contract, but thought again that there was value in just taking a brief look at the history of how we got to where we are right now with fire services here in Sonoma Valley. So in the late 1990s, there was really a grassroots effort between the Valley of the Moon Fire Protection District and the City of Sonoma Fire Department to work more closely together. A lot of the crews felt there were efficiencies to be gained and better service to be able to be provided by coming together. With that, in 2002, a JPA was formed, which created the Sonoma Valley Fire and Rescue Authority. The goals there were to provide both fire and EMS services to the district and the city, to eliminate duplication of administrative positions and improve the level of service that we were able to provide to the community. We were, also had the aim of becoming more cost-efficient in use of our budget funds. And we, part of this overarching goal or vision was the fact that we knew, as we were service providers, that fire services and EMS are truly a service that is best provided on a regional model. If we can get agencies to come together, we're able to send the closest resource regardless of jurisdictional boundaries, and that in turn provides the best service to the community member who is having an emergency and needs our help. So the JPA worked very well, and with that in mind, in 2011, the JPA evolved into a contract for services model. The Valley of the Moon District was selected as the single employing agency and contractor. This was determined to be more cost-effective due to the district's participation in the Sonoma County Retirement Association versus PERS. The initial term of the contract was five years, and you can see, the split of expenditures within our budget was determined to be 57% on the city and 47, or 43% with the district. Past that expenditure portion of the budget, though, the city receives all EMS revenues and reimbursements to its general fund. And in 2016, the contract for services was extended for a second five-year term. So important to highlight, in late 2016, the Sonoma Valley Fire and Rescue Authority earned the highest classification rating from the insurance services office of a Class I fire department for our jurisdiction here within the City of Sonoma. This is a rating attained by only 2% of fire departments within California and 0.3% in the nation. And that can have a very, very important positive impact on insurance ratings, especially on the commercial side. Next is our organizational chart. We, we are a full district, full, full-service fire district, fire authority, and I don't know that I need to go into detail on the organization chart there unless there's any questions. Skip over to our five-year service call history. And as you can see, with the, with one slight drop in 2014, our calls for service are steadily on the increase. And over the last five years, from 2013 to 17, they've increased 18%. Next, I'd like to go into what we feel are some of the benefits of this service model that we have with the contract for services. As I just mentioned, the, the city now receives an ISO Class I rating that would, would absolutely not be possible without the construct of our current service model. Additional benefits are professional fire service and EMS management, financial, accounting, payroll, and human resource services. We have 24/7 supervision and incident management through shift battalion chief coverage. We have specialized rescue equipment and services. We provide swift water rescue, technical rescue, confined space rescue, and along with that, a dedicated Type II rescue apparatus. We have the ability to have a depth of resources. We have the ability to respond to simultaneous incidents. We'll see that, we see that more and more regularly as our calls for service increase. And a lot of times, I'll, I'll be asked out in the community, "Oh, I heard a lot of sirens the other day, what was going on?" And, well, it wasn't, it wasn't one single big emergency that required a lot of our resources, but it was simultaneous resources. So each one of those requires a minimum of an engine company and an ambulance to respond. We also, speaking of ambulances and our increasing demand, we have the ability to upstaff additional ambulances, ambulances as needed. Right now, we provide four engine companies and two ambulance companies around the clock, but we have the ability to upstaff an additional ambulance at each one of our four staffed fire stations. And essentially, what this does is provides the best level of service to our community. So whatever call is the one that's happening right now, we're prepared and able to respond to it most effectively. We also have the ability to respond with a full assignment to fire or rescue incidents just within our own department. As I mentioned, we have four engine companies, two ambulances, and we also have that chief officer, that battalion chief. So we're able to meet the NFPA standards for deployment for a fire or rescue incident just within our own resources. So we no longer rely on mutual aid on the initial response, but we have a very well-developed partnership with the other agencies here in Sonoma Valley. And so they're coming in to backfill our stations and provide additional resources if needed. And last on, on this sheet, on the benefits of the contract is, previously, before the JPA and contract for services, the city was able to staff one engine and one ambulance, whereas now, again, we have four engines and two ambulances staffed on a daily basis. Continuing with some efficiencies, we have consistency in training, equipment, operations, and administration. We, we provide EMS billing services. We provide fleet maintenance and management, facilities management. Our city finance director is also the district's treasurer, which provides another level of oversight and checks and balances within that contractual agreement. We've experienced many cost efficiencies with purchasing, and similar to what Chief Sackett mentioned, with, with us providing all of these services, there's a, there's a pretty substantial reduction in workload for some of the city departments in terms of personnel, payroll, administration, and fleet, and facilities management. Next, I'd like to go into some of the...
Any other question?
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah, of course.
Our city finance director is your treasurer?
Yes.
And if that's Sue, right now, you're their treasurer? Okay. I, that's, I didn't know that.
So that's a, that's a separate contract for services. Outside of our, our big contract for services, we contract back with the city for, for district treasurer services, for Sue's services.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Next, I'd like to move on and go over a little bit of the contract history and overview from a financial standpoint. And there's, there's a number of things that we're looking at here. We can see that the total contract cost, which is the city's share on the expenditure side, has been very modest in its, in its percentage increase since about 12, 13. In 12, 13, there was, there was the last of the oversight committee between the district and the city that were working on cost-share formulas. And at that point, the cost-share formula evolved to what they felt was a more appropriate 57% contribution from the city, up from 53. So you see, there was an 8% increase that year. But since then, our highest increase has been a 3.4% on the expenditure side. Then we also have a column in there for EMS revenues, and as Sue mentioned in her presentation on revenue, EMS revenues continue to increase very positively. And that EMS revenue is a, is a combination of both our billing for ambulance services, as well as our very active pursuit of any and all reimbursements, including state and federal programs, that this year will bring in over $200,000 in additional revenue to the city's general fund. And then the, the next one that I really want to highlight is the net fire and EMS cost. And that's highlighted in the, in the red text, that's the fifth column over. And, and then next to that is the net percentage increase. And so what we've done there is taken the city's contribution on the expense side, and then reduced that by the amount of EMS revenue. And then you get to the net cost to the city for each fiscal year. And one of the things that, you know, is really, really, I think, very important to note and very meaningful is from 13, 14 to 18, 19, those numbers are essentially flat. So over a five-year period, the net cost to the city on an annual basis has essentially been flat for fire and EMS services, with a, with a whole lot of service benefits to go along with that.
Um, do you have any questions? Sorry, I was looking at the math while you were talking. Are you saying that the, the cost, you're saying the cost of the city is flat over the la, over the life shown here between 10, 11, and 18, 19?
No, I...
Sorry.
About the third year in, from 13, 14.
Oh, okay.
If you look over, 3.2 million for the net cost.
Okay.
And then you go up to 18, 19, this year's projected budget. This year's projected budget is actually a little bit lower.
Because when you start in 10, 11, it's a 25% increase.
Right. But again, we had a couple of very significant things. One I pointed out with the cost share change in that formula that was agreed to. And then we also, we used to provide on a contractual basis, we used to provide services to the Sonoma Raceway, ambulance services, which was kind of a give and take. It was, it, it took a tremendous amount of staff time and energies to fill that on, with part-time employees, but there was some revenue that came back into the system for that. And then we also had in 13, 14, we had some reductions in, had a pretty marked reduction in EMS revenue. Part of that was the contract. But again, if we look at, if we look at the last five years, it's, it's essentially flat.
Okay.
I'm sorry, the report here says the city's share is 57% and 43%.
The city's share is 57, and the district's share is 43.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions? David?
Just curious, because you were bringing up the revenue. Is, do you have cost recovery on that? I mean, for, for what gets billed out, what percent goes unpaid?
We, for what are, there, there's different rates based on whether you're a resident and whether it's advanced life support treatment that you receive on your transport versus basic life support. We also, there's a mileage calculator, so if we transport to Sonoma Valley Hospital, it's, it's less of a bill. But roughly, we're, we're a little bit above 50% of what are, what we bill out, we get back in revenue. But it is based on a, it is based on a fee schedule that we calculate every couple of years, and we update to reflect what our cost of providing that service is.
Yeah, I think I just kind of curious.
Yeah.
Well, and it reminds me of the hospital, because obviously, you have to have a coder.
We do.
C-O-T-E-R.
We do.
That is supreme.
Yep, and we do. We have a fantastic billing department. We have two certified coders, and then we also have a certified compliance officer who oversees them. So we do, we do a very good job of following industry best practices in order to recover as much EMS revenue as we can.
I know the hospital feels the same way.
Okay. Next thing I'd like to just touch on, because it was a big change for our organization here last year, was we entered into a contract in 2017 to provide services to the Glen Ellen Fire District. And this was as a result of challenges faced by Glen Ellen, which were the lack of adequate and reliable volunteer response. And it's something that's happening throughout the fire services, not just here locally in Sonoma County, but really nationwide, as people are, there's a lot of competing interests for people's time and a lot of demands, and so we find that less and less people are able to volunteer as they once were. So with the contract for services, the Valley of the Moon Fire District provides 24/7 staffing to Glen Ellen. We provide a two-person ALS engine company. That means one of the people is always a paramedic. And the initial term for this contract was a five-year... And the initial term for this contract was a five-year term as well. It's important for us to note that the Glen Ellen contract is a separate contract and a separate budget account within our system. So there's no kind of crossing between city and district, our original contract and budget account versus the new one with Glen Ellen. So there's no financial impact to the city or our jointly-held account. And then one thing to also notice is that in the Glen Ellen station, we do, we were able to put one of our ambulances up there. So when that engine company takes the ambulance and provides ambulance transport services, any of the revenue generated on those calls comes back to the city. So the city actually is getting a little bit of a financial benefit there. But the bigger thing with the Glen Ellen contract is the benefits to our system. As I said previously, this adds a fourth staffed engine company to our system, which provides a great deal of depth and the ability to handle those simultaneous emergencies as well as the bigger emergencies. We also, the volunteers that were formerly with Glen Ellen have become Sonoma Valley volunteers, and that adds still another degree of depth to our system as they can staff additional resources when we need to. One of the things that feels like a good time to bring up is, you know, I know a lot of attention was on our agency during the October fire events, but we had another significant fire event just a couple of weeks ago at the pallet factory. And our whole system worked remarkably well with the Shell Vista Fire District as well as Cal Fire. And we had a very full commitment of our resources and the ability to backfill all of our stations and companies during that event. So, and we were able to keep that event to a lot smaller one than in 2013. So the evidence of the benefits of our system, you know, we continue to see it probably more regularly than we'd like to, but it is there and it is beneficial. Last thing on the less glamorous side of things is with the Glen Ellen contract, we were able to add additional capacity in terms of administrative assistant hours and fire Next, I'd like to move into some of the challenges and opportunities that we face as an organization right now. As I mentioned with Glen Ellen, you know, we face an ongoing challenge of declining Although we did see, we have seen an uptick in that since the October fire events, and we're happy to be putting on a joint volunteer training academy with the Kenwood and Maya Commiss volunteer fire departments. We have an increasing demand for service. Our call volume is increasing, and our number of simultaneous or multiple calls is also increasing. And then our scope of services, the demand for our varied services that we provide are also increasing. Emergency planning, emergency preparedness, vegetation management, redebatement, and public education and community involvement, our demands on those are also increasing greatly. With all of these increasing demands, staff is feeling it with, you know, we're at capacity. We're still down a position, a staff position from when the recession hit and we had to do some downsizing. So we're finding creative ways to try to address that, but that is an ongoing need for our organization. It helps us to provide the best service we can, also to look at development of our organization, succession planning, and just continuing to follow industry best practices. Opportunities. Regional collaboration and efficiencies. As I mentioned and went into detail on the Glen Ellen contract, we continue to work very closely with our other neighbors, Kenwood and Shell Vista, and we're in the process of looking to help support the Maya Commiss Volunteer Fire Company through a Contract for Services as well. We are very active countywide with the Fire Advisory Council project that's looking to improve fire services throughout the county. And we are very involved in valley-wide emergency planning and operations. We also have the opportunity right now, we have the public's attention, and I think that's a really good thing, where there's a heightened awareness and interest in fire prevention, defensible space, redebatement, and just being prepared. And so we appreciate that opportunity to get out and talk to folks within the community to make sure we're all better prepared. And the last thing that's an opportunity right now is we're close, and I'm optimistic that because of our heavy involvement with the EMS work group right now, that we might actually get our ambulance service rights area put into the next EMS ordinance countywide, which would be a huge, huge accomplishment. For those, the city of Sonoma took on the ambulance company in the late 80s and had to face outside competition, won a lawsuit against the county and the state to continue to be the exclusive provider here, but that has still not been put into the EMS ordinance. So we're hopeful that that'll finally happen. And last, I will go over briefly some changes to the budget for 1819 compared to the current years. So the... Yeah, please. Thank you. So we're looking at an increase in the contract of $85,435 or 1.6%. The largest factor in this is that we do, while we are in the Sonoma County Employees' Retirement Association, and overall, our rates are very advantageous for us. We do see a 2.5% increase in our, in the employer's contribution rate for next year. And then along with that, we have a couple of minor increases to our fuel account due to the gas tax that we have to pay as well. And then we have an increase in our safety clothing, following industry best practices and national standards to have a third-party qualified vendor come in and provide inspection, maintenance, and repair for our turnout clothing. We have a few decreases to our budget. One is the Redcom Dispatch fees, which is a formula-based system, has been reduced. We also noticed and have reassigned to what we feel is more appropriate, LAFCO fees from our joint budget into the Valley of the Moon District budget. And then lastly, we also had a big decrease to our budget. I apologize, it's not on this slide, but because of our reorganization when we reestablished the training officer's position, we had reorganized other staff positions, reduced the number of fire engineers down to firefighter, paramedic positions. And as a result of that, we realized quite a bit of salary savings. So overall, very positive...
Salary?
Savings.
I'm sorry. Fire engineers, I know them as EOs, engineering operators?
Uh-huh.
So that's what you're talking about, the people who maintain?
And drive the fire engines and operate all the pumps and aerial ladders.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So our services and supplies portion of the budget was actually reduced by 157 this year. And we do have a couple of unknowns that are kind of outstanding right now, that are not included in budget projections. But the district is currently in labor negotiations with all of its employees. And then we also have not, we've not received our 2019 healthcare costs. So keeping our fingers crossed on especially the healthcare costs, that those are, maybe we get a little bit of a break this year compared to the last couple, but we don't know yet. And that concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Does anyone have any questions? Rachel?
So these last two unknowns, would that, is that something that wouldn't show up until the next year's as far as its impact on us? Or would it come up, is that just costs that could come up mid-year?
I would certainly defer to the city manager, but in recent years, what we've done is that would, we would know that, we would certainly hope to know those costs before mid-year, and so we would bring those to you as mid-year adjustments.
Not at this time, but I know that we're in the middle of a five-year contract, but the same question about, is it to our mutual advantage to have a set increase every year just so we can have a known budget or not? Just for ongoing discussion.
So I just have a couple of simple questions. So prior to the JPA mutual response, was it difficult? Was it, how did that all work?
It was, it was not streamlined. So mutual response is requesting help from your neighbor when you need it, and that, you know, involves making that request, and then it would, that request would often go to a chief officer, who would then say, yes, we can, we have the ability to provide this help, or how much help we can provide at this time. So it was a delay in getting that help. Now we have, you know, our whole area, the city, Glen Ellen, and Valley of the Moon, all of the areas that we serve, we consider one jurisdiction. So when there's an emergency, our whole system, whatever is required of it, goes, responds to there immediately. There is no delay, there's no asking anybody, making that request, and getting approval for that request before it goes.
So if one crew is out, number two crew would go for a call?
Absolutely, and that happens very, very regularly.
So the other question I have, I guess, oh, the JPA, I'm keeping my fingers crossed that the answer is yes. With the JPA, does that provide more opportunity for people to move up within the organization just because it's bigger?
Absolutely. So now that we're, you know, committed to being one agency through the Contract for Services, and all of the employees became Valley of the Moon Fire District employees in 2011 when the contract was first signed. So yes, it does provide a lot more opportunities for our members to either promote or to kind of have lateral opportunities. You know, someone might want to go work at a different station where there's the ambulance crew and the engine crew, or they may want to work just at an engine crew station, or they may want to work downtown here at Sonoma where we have the ladder truck and maybe get a little bit more familiar and competent on ladder truck operations. So, yeah, very good question.
Thank you. And the other one, I think, when I looked at the four engines, two ambulances, I thought, where's that truck? And now there's a truck, okay? Because I'm so used to that.
So with the response, the engines are our primary responding apparatus, but in each of the stations, we have specialized equipment, we have the ladder truck, we have wild land engines, we have water tenders, and I mentioned the rescue. And depending on the type of emergency, the crew will go on whichever apparatus is the most appropriate.
Okay. And in the budget, in our binder here, I saw applied for and was awarded $411,584. I mean, from the Assistance to Firefighters Grant, AFG, and that was for Scott bottles, is that right?
Absolutely, and thank you for bringing that up.
Well, I just think it's, you know, it's going after the money, and I think it's great.
It is. We're very active with that, and I apologize for the sake of time, I couldn't go through all of the details of everything, but yes, we're very active in pursuing grants. That was a huge one that benefited all three of the agencies within Sonoma Valley Fire and Rescue. That was 90% of the cost was covered by the federal government. And otherwise, we would have been coming back with, you know, a request for over $100,000 from each agency to replace this really critical safety equipment that was at the end of its life.
So I don't want to cause a problem for you, but does the person who maintains the Scott bottles get an incentive of any kind? Or just for the experience?
It's run by one of our fire captains.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Are there any discussions about taking over the, for the Eldridge Fire Department? Have you guys entered into those discussions?
Absolutely. So SDC is, has a commitment to staff their fire department through June of 19. We are actively, actively involved on many different levels within the process for SDC in making sure that there is adequate fire and security services there on the property regardless of what the disposition ends up being.
Well, if you get further along, please let us know.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much, Chief. Does anyone have any comments or questions before? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I was going to suggest, if you want, Mayor Gramonte, if you'd like to offer a public comment on the budget to anyone who's there, we did have a little miscommunication. The meeting was formally scheduled for four o'clock, but we put out some additional public information that said six. So if you would like to do any public comment for anyone who would like to speak on the budget now, and then we can maybe do one closing, if that would be the preference of the council, but your call. And we still, so what we still have to go through, just so council's aware, we were going to, I was not necessarily going to go through every department because I think it's there in the budget, and a lot of the baseline budgets, for example, you've either already approved, for example, you or I spoke about in the city manager's message where there are changes like planning, the planning budget, we've talked about cost recovery. The only other thing I'd add is that I've put $8,500 in to maybe have some either intern or contract help with sustainability. Otherwise, that budget is pretty much the same. You've approved a lot of the finance changes. So I was going to shift, and the next piece, we're going to talk briefly about internal service funds, then our enterprise funds, then go to the capital improvement budget, and then come back to general questions from the council.
Okay. Well, at this point, I'd like to open up to the public if you have any comments.
Hi, George Thompson, 311, Nicoley Lane. I'm a little confused, I thought the meeting was at six tonight.
Is, sorry, George, as I mentioned, the formal, the agenda actually went out with a six o'clock start time. And, sorry, 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 my apologies. The meeting went out with a four o'clock start time, so this was an early study session on budget planned from like about four o'clock till eight o'clock. Then, and that went out to everyone who typically gets our council agendas. And then we put out just some additional information through our e-news that said six o'clock, so my apologies. So that's why we're having a separate kind of opportunity right now for anyone who would like to speak.
Well, I have something to say, but it doesn't, well, I have a twofold comment. One relates to the budget and one doesn't. So I came in to make...
I think based on where we are, it would be appropriate to go ahead and let you do both. So please go ahead.
I can do both?
Yes.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to address...
I'm sorry, your name again?
My name's George Thompson.
Thank you.
I live at 311 Nicoley Lane in Sonoma. I'd like to address the incident a little bit that happened on Mother's Day, the shooting. I'm very disturbed by the fact that Sonoma County mental health would not come down here when they were called the day before. So what I recommend to our city council is that you write a letter to the Sonoma County mental health people and remind them that we are members of the county as well in Sonoma. We're not on the 101 corridor, but you might even send a map with them, with your letter, letting them see that Highway 12 comes through Sonoma from Santa Rosa. And that perhaps they would be willing to come down for a mental health emergency that could have prevented a shooting, could have prevented a life from being ruined. And I just don't get it, why they say they won't come down for, because it's off the 101 corridor when there's plenty of tax-paying county citizens out here, way out here in the east side of the county. So perhaps we can address that. The other thing I would like to say, somewhat related, I would like to encourage the council to revisit our contract with the sheriff department. I think it would be perhaps prudent with the increase that the sheriff department is asking for in the next budget fiscal year. And I kind of, you know, being a longtime member of Sonoma, I would like to see that sort of small-town police department feeling again. I don't think the police handled this situation at the gas station even a little bit well. And I just think that perhaps if we had a, it might be worth revisiting our contract with the sheriff's department in the spirit of maybe perhaps saving money and also having some local police officers. I remember I used to know most of the police officers in town. Now I don't know any of them. But that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Our city manager, that's, actually, that's one of the discussions we've had recently with the whole issue of funding for SOS, and possibly a gaps analysis for this valley, to find out what services we really need. And unfortunately, you know, I don't know how I call them CIPs, Crisis Intervention Teams? Yeah. Program? And I, you know, I, there's no blame. It's just a sad, sorry situation. But we really are lacking in some services here. I don't think it's the agency, I don't know. I mean, it's just something we've discussed, and we have found that we're lacking in a lot of different areas, and it's really a problem for us here in the valley.
Yeah, so I think this is an area that we have had conversations with Supervisor Goran about recently, and I know that she feels strongly too about need for additional services. There is going to be some kind of a, we're hopeful, funding for a needs assessment that will be looking at services for, primarily focused on homeless services, but I think that starts to open the door to broader mental health services, et cetera, that are needed. So I think, you know, we need to have a voice and continue to, continue to ask. So those efforts, I know the council is already, are already having some of these conversations.
My name is Mark Martholler, and I live at 146 East Spain Street. So the reason I'm up here is because I found out about the Verizon's plan to roll out the 5G close proximity microwave radiation antennas in Sonoma. And there's 11 sites, I'm sure you all probably know about this. I'm coming from a general, like, I live in the town, been here all my life, and on this, on this issue, I believe we're all the same, because we all have common human interests, right? And these things are super dangerous, accumulatively. And there's, I try to look for health studies, positive or benign reports on this technology. I haven't found one. There's like hundreds. I've even heard like there's 25,000 scientific studies internationally, all over the place. When this technology came rolling out, everybody looked at it. It's, it's nothing good. So that's my basic concern, and I'd like to get more into that. But I'm here alone, because it's kind of last minute. But I was involved in a test to find out if Verizon's claim or justification for putting in these 11, first 11 towers, they want to put them in because of a drop in coverage. So there's a group of people who have been going to other, other cities to do tests at these sites to see if that is actually true. And I was involved in the last test in Sonoma. And if you're able to make a call from that location, that is some kind of proof that that claim is false. Skip to the applications. There's a lot to cover, and I don't know everything, so. But I was asked to get, read this, because there's other people involved, and we all plan to get here at the Planning Commission meeting next, or this, later this month, and have more of a plan or a set thing.
Thank you, and you have about 36 seconds left.
Great. "There's misinformation regarding the Verizon close proximity cell antenna applications that have been submitted to the Planning Commission of Sonoma. The council has been misinformed that you are not to be involved with the review process. That is incorrect. Please get involved immediately. We must reject these toxic cell installations from the residential areas of Sonoma, and the city council and the community have the right to oppose and stop them. Many other cities, like ours, have done so. Sebastopol, Monterey, Hillsborough, and Piedmont have rejected them, and Santa Rosa has their project on hold." Please go to, I'll pass this around, only copy I have, and read about it. "There should be a special study session on the council agenda as soon as possible, like the Santa Rosa City Council did. I request that one of you respond to me about this study session. Thank you." Not me necessarily, but...
Thank you very much. So you can hand that to the city clerk.
Okay, thank you.
Is your contact information on there?
My personal contact isn't.
I mean, you want us to respond to you about...
You can definitely respond to me, and I'll write it down on the paper.
Are there any others here this evening who would like to speak before the council? If not, I'm going to close the session, this session, the public session, and I'd like to take a five-minute break.
Thank you. Counsel, what I'd like to do next is ask Wayne Wirick, who manages our internal service funds, to come up and just briefly show you the internal service funds.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. If you turn to page 184 of the budget, I wanted to just take a moment to speak about the internal service funds. As you know, that, that, those funds create a mechanism, or a savings account, if you will, to repair and replace things that we know are going to need replaced over a period of time. So we have three internal service funds, first being Management Information Services. This year, it's a fairly unremarkable budget in Management Information Services, because last year, we did a major computer upgrade and software upgrade. And so as you'll see in, on page 184, the difference between last year and this year in terms of expenses, we've, the expenses have gone down, because we don't have any major implementation projects going on in Management Information Services. On page 185, on the, for the vehicle replacement fund, you'll see a number of pieces of equipment listed at the bottom that we intend to replace this year. A couple of items of note, there are several trucks for the water department cemetery, a new backhoe for the water department. One item of note is the portable generator that's shown under the water, W-26. The amount that we set aside in the vehicle replacement fund was not sufficient to buy the new generator that we need to buy. So the water fund has budgeted an extra $20,000 to help make up that difference in terms of funding. And I, moving to the long-term building maintenance fund, if you look at page 188, that lists the projects that we have, that we're hopeful that will get completed over the next budget year, that relate to facilities. And most of these are repair or replacement-type projects for building facilities. This is differentiated from the capital improvement plan that Public Works will be going over a little bit later, but this is just for those items that are either regular, or they may be one-time items, repair issues that need to be resolved, that we've set aside some funds in the, in the building maintenance fund. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have regarding the internal services funds. I know that was very brief, but sure.
Oh, David?
Yeah, I just have a quick one. The regional library fireplace leak repair, I see it's on the budget. Is that something that is going to take place this summer for the library?
I, I think it's unrealistic that we'll be able to get to that this summer. We've, right, right now, with the workload that we have, it's, the summers, I don't know we're going to get to anything on this list during the summer months, but we would be attempting to try to get to this, you know, later on in the year.
Yeah, because the reason, the only reason I brought it up is because I'm on the lab, and I know that I've been seeing it for two years. I, is, do you think that this is something that could possibly make the structure, where it could cost a lot more money if dry rot starts coming in there?
Well, I, we've had some roof repairs done previously with respect to this particular leak at, at the library, and the reason that it has reoccurred was due to the earthquake a few years ago, and it, and the brick chimney moved a little bit and created some, some water damage. We think we have that patched up for the time being, but we think we need a long-term solution. So to answer your question, I don't think there's any long-term repercussions by delaying it another six or eight months.
Yeah, good. I know that you do good work, so I'm not questioning. I just wanted to bring it up during this, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under the terms of the Visitors Bureau lease for the Carnegie Building, do they have any responsibility for maintenance?
No, not other than the, the maintenance of their, within their space. It's just general maintenance, but nothing pertaining to the structure itself.
I think, excuse me, I'd have to pull it up, but I think there is some contribution for utilities, that type of thing. There are some of those costs that they pay, but I don't recall off the top.
But like for flooring, that's not really...
No, that's, that's not a cost that they would need to cover.
For the Sebastiani Theater, do we also pay for all the maintenance?
If you hang for a minute, let me come back to that one.
So, I'm sorry, you're, so you're Carnegie, the Visitors Bureau, they're doing, because I think they're doing something. I don't know, they're painting? Is there a new carpeting that's going in, and they pay for that? Maybe I'm wrong about the carpeting, but I know there's some painting.
Yes, there, there is some painting and some carpeting. We're, we're responsible for the upkeep of the building, and it's not...
The structure, or in...
The structure, including the finishes inside.
All right.
So there's no responsibility on the part of the Visitors Bureau to contribute with respect to those costs.
All right, thank you.
So as far as the technology, so computers are included, but iPads, I've seen those on other budgets, so, and I, I don't know, phones, like cell phones, are those something that are going to, like, it makes sense to me that it would end up on this, if it's something that we're using, and we're just going to have to keep cycling out, but I know that the new ones seem to be under the budget of the department who's going to get the tablets.
So the tablets themselves, the initial purchase of a tablet computer, or tablet computers, is, is dealt out to each department. So whoever's buying it, it's within their department budget. Once it's been purchased, then the replacement of that piece of equipment goes into the MIS fund, and we, we calculate what it will take to replace that piece of equipment, and then the department will have to contribute a certain amount based on the replacement cost. So if you think of MIS, think of replacement costs and ongoing contracts, subscriptions, those kinds of things for software products.
Mary Gramonte, can we go back to Vice Mayor Harrington's question? So your question specifically about Sebastiani was...
Given that there's similar types of leases where the entity doing business there has it for free from the city, do we treat them equally, that we do all the maintenance, or not?
So at the Sebastiani Theater, basically, we have a master lease, and then 50% of the lease is paid back by the theater foundation. In addition to, I think they all, it's a similar type of arrangement, I think, on kind of some of the insurance. Utilities, as I understand, are covered by the theater operations. Maintenance are covered by the theater operations, so we don't have any responsibility for the maintenance of the building. Basically, what we are doing as a civic organization is, I see the, kind of Sebastiani Theater is one of our recreation partners. We are in helping to create an investment that that Sebastiani Theater, by helping do the lease, continues to... by helping do the lease, continues to provide the services and, you know, theater and pieces that it provides.
I guess I was just thinking, it's somewhat unusual that we basically don't charge the Visitors Bureau for use of the premises. I would think that they would then, in exchange, take care of the minor things like painting or carpeting in the areas that they are using, since they don't pay anything to lease it. That was my thought. And so, I just wanted to know, did we have a standard?
I don't think there's a standard. I think, you know, we do, we have a variety of buildings that have been kind of contracted over time. There is a modest, I want to say $6,500 a year or something, that is a lease that's paid for by the Visitors Bureau for the use of Carnegie. That lease is up to the end of 2019, so it's one of those leases that we'll be looking at. I think that's, I'm happy to double-check that, but there's a separate contract.
I thought it was a dollar a year.
There's a, it's a little more than that, but it's not a, it's not what I would call a market rate, per se. It's part of, you know, again, the city's kind of investment in having the visitors' services at that facility. But it is a contract, I think, that's up in December 2019 that we'll be looking at.
Gary?
So, Kathy, as a commercial property owner, I'm responsible for everything that goes on in my commercial buildings. And the city does not own the Sebastiani Theater. We do own the Carnegie Library. So, that's why we're paying for taking care of our own building.
That would be another difference on, for Sebastiani.
If we, if I had a tenant that paid no rent, then I would expect them to, like, at least paint, probably. As a landlord, that's my landlord comment.
And just one other thing I'd like to add on the building maintenance. If you see the last long-term building maintenance, just as thin a staff as we are, the building basically is done partly by Wayne doing some time and Trent. You know, and they all, it's just kind of, they each have other core functions. So, we've put, for the first time, some contract dollars in there for someone, that maybe we can find someone to help move some of these projects along. Because otherwise, you know, they get carried year to year, and meanwhile, we need to be protecting these facilities.
Thank you. Well, you know, Kathy, how I feel about the women's bathroom, the sinks. I don't know if you're, are you, is that part of your responsibility, your rents?
That's actually part of Public Works, and we actually went and walked that with the Public Works Director last week to take a look. And that's something that we're going to be looking at, just taking care of, out of maintenance budget.
Because my only, my concern, I'm sorry, Wayne, I wanted to throw it at you.
No, that's okay.
But thousands of people see those horrible bathrooms, especially the sinks. And I was thinking, maybe the rotary could replace those sinks.
Well, I don't think, I don't think we're going to do that, but, you know, keep in mind that we use those bathrooms. We have 2,000 people that show up on the plaza every Tuesday night, and we overuse that. We don't charge those folks any rent either. So, it's something that we have to be looking at our costs of doing business on all sides.
I appreciate that you did do a walk-through, and you understand what I'm saying. Thank you.
And just, Rebecca was able to pull up, so the contract with Visitors Bureau, it's $6,185 annually is the base rent that was determined some time ago. But we can talk more about that off, at a future time.
But don't they get some sort of rebate because they, like, overpay?
There was also an overpay piece, correct, and that still is in process, so, but that's the term of the current contract. Okay, Wayne, thank you very much.
Thank you, Wayne.
So, now I'd like to move to enterprise funds and start talking first, water or cemetery. I'll leave it to Sue and Colleen.
Evening, Mayor Aggermonte, members of the City Council, and Public Works Director, City Engineer, Colleen Ferguson. Let's turn to page 163 in your packet and just touch briefly on the water utility and the cemetery budgets. So, page 165 has language about the water utility. And you all know the residents, visitors, and businesses in Sonoma count on the city to deliver high-quality, dependable water for many uses, consumption, irrigation, fire protection. And the water utility is funded through the Water Enterprise Fund. And you all have been talking a lot about the Water Enterprise Fund recently as we go through the water rate-setting process. I'm not going to get into the details of the Water Utility Fund. You're very familiar with them. Their proposed water utility budget for next year is very similar to last year, with a few exceptions. One thing to point out is the increase of the, in the cost of the water that we buy from the Sonoma County Water Agency, where we get most of our water, it, just the cost of the water is going up 6%. So, that's a significant increase in our budget. And then, there were two things that were added that are noted on page 168. There's an increase in water conservation to accommodate no-discharge water main flushing. We have to flush water through the system every year just to keep the water from getting stale and keep the quality of the water high. That's typically been done by flushing hydrants. The water just goes onto the street and out into the creeks. Having funding for $35,000 will allow us to flush one-fifth of the city's water system through a filter system and back into the system. So, there's no water waste associated with this no-discharge water main flushing. So, that's an increase in the budget. And then, an increase in repair and maintenance, primarily due to adding regular maintenance services for water-related generators. It's what it says here, that $7,000. And that's really in response to lessons learned during the October fires, where our generator at a pump station failed, and then our standby generator failed. And we really need to have all our generators on an annual maintenance contract, like we have for the generator here at the police building. So, there's additional costs for that, in addition to the cost of purchasing water. So, those are the main changes in the water utility budget. And Assistant City Manager Sue Casey and I would be happy to answer any questions you have about the water utility.
Sorry, let me just add one other thing. As counsel knows with the cost allocation plan, so the 1819 budget also reflects a reduction in the direct costing, the direct charging of, for example, my time to water, finance times to water, except for the account tech that spends 75% of her time focused on water. Otherwise, again, with the cost allocation plan, where where we have indirect city overhead that supports the water, we now have a cost allocation plan with a methodology that lays that out. And so, you see there's a reduction in the salary and wages. And yet, there is also then, you'll see the transfers and the cost for the transfers out, which reflects some of those, I'm sorry, yes, which reflects those, the cost allocation plan and the leases. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear as well.
That's an excellent point. So, where things show up on the lines in the budget has shifted, but the total hasn't changed substantially from the baseline.
Anyone have questions or comments?
Okay, moving on to the cemetery fund. So, this is page 169. And, you know, we have a cemetery program. We have three cemeteries, the Valley Cemetery, the Veteran Cemetery, and the Mountain Cemetery. Over 15 usable acres. And the operations and maintenance responsibilities are more than I had understood. I've been here a year now, and I've learned quite a bit about the cemetery operations. There's a lot of activity at the cemeteries, actually. There's burials and enrollment preparation coordination, which is very hands-on with the families, making sure that that all goes well. Then the cemetery improvements, tree hazard assessment and abatement, grounds maintenance, mausoleum maintenance, road maintenance, vandalism abatement. We do have that in cemeteries as well. An increased cost in this budget request is $37,000, as it's talked about on, in the middle of page 170, in the budget for contract services, so we can do a comprehensive tree hazard assessment and do a cemetery financial review next fiscal year. Other than that, it's a very similar budget to the past, other than some of the financial transfers that I can't say I completely understand. So, Assistant City Manager Sue Casey and I will try to answer any questions you have about the cemetery fund.
So, I just wanted to talk a little bit about, there's three separate funds in the cemetery. There's the Endowment Fund, then there's the Regular Cemetery Operations Fund. And then, we also have a small fund that was set up some time ago for when, many years ago, actually, when people made reservations to be buried in one of the city cemeteries. And long ago, they would make, they would pay maybe starting at $4 up to $400 to reserve a spot in the cemetery. And so, that fund is actually decreasing as those reservations are transferred over to the, to the revenue fund, the Regular Operations Fund. The Endowment Fund is actually a portion of, when somebody comes in to either reserve a spot for the cemetery, they put a part of what their reserve goes into the Endowment Fund, and that's actually for maintenance. Again, a long time ago, there wasn't really, you know, we didn't collect enough revenue to, for the ongoing maintenance of the cemetery. And so, I think the last time they did a, really a fee study on that was in 2010. They went out and looked at other cemeteries to see what they were charging. That would really be a part of this fee study and kind of the financial overview of the cemetery, because really, in the last two years, we actually have made a little bit of revenue in the cemetery, but really, it's not a, it's not a revenue. It's really not an enterprise fund. It's really doesn't make money, enough money to cover itself. So, so those are the kinds of things that we're going to be looking at when we look at the cemetery overall, overall financial piece, so.
I don't know where I got this. I found it somewhere, City of Sonoma Cemetery information. It's a great sheet. It's how many niches, how, you know, just, it's, I don't, where do you?
Yeah, that was a piece of information that, it was a piece of information that we received, some questions from the press, and we had information on a variety of sheets. And so, staff went through about a month ago and put it together in, in just kind of a one-page summary. I think I handed it out to council about a month ago and in our one-by-ones. So, but it's kind of a current status of what we have and don't have. And that's information we put on our website, too. If anyone would like to see another copy, happy to.
I think it's really informative. If you, Colleen, Ms. Ferguson, could explain about the difficulty of burials for the cemetery. I mean, families probably paid, I don't know, let's just say, top dollar, $500 for, you know, for land to be able to bury four or five people, and it was very inexpensive. But now, to be able to go through the rock, about what is that now?
I actually don't have a cost for that. I just know it's a very intensive operation to provide the excavation first. And we have one person to maintain the cemetery. He can't do that himself. So, he needs to borrow staff from other parts of the department to be able to do a burial. I know the little mini excavator we just acquired in this year's budget will be helpful for excavations for that. And then, the caskets are large and heavy, and you don't just drop those in either. There's a whole apparatus that you set up over the excavated area to lower the casket into the hole safely and not just dump it in, you know. It's, so it's quite a process, and it all has to be done respective, respectfully and carefully. And thanks for mentioning that.
Yeah, it's, I understand from Rita and also Trent how difficult it is. And, you know, this goes, it's too late now, which is unfortunate, but that's why a lot of nonprofits and foundations have gift acceptance policies. But I'm sure General Vallejo gave us that land, which was wonderful. But had we known, had anybody known, you know, I guess, it's a boondoggle right now for us. But it's still a wonderful place, you know. Obviously, we'd love to be able to turn it around.
I guess my only question is, Sue talked a little bit about the transfers in. The only thing I just don't understand is, if this is the way that you really want to show it, a transfer in, is this something that the cemetery fund would have to pay back? Not the water tank rental, but the other?
No, well, the Endowment Fund was set up to transfer funds into the cemetery fund for operations. So, it's not really a payback, although there was a loan several years ago that needs to be paid back.
So, is that $50,000 every year?
Yeah, and they've just been doing that for a while, and it, I'm not really sure it takes care of all the operations, but it does.
But just a made-up number, right? I mean, it's not something.
Yeah, there was no.
So, in all reality, if you look at the revenue, the revenue would be, it would be at least negative $200,000, the cemetery. I think it just paints it in a little rosy picture if you look at the two numbers. But in reality, it's something that, you know, I would want the citizens of Sonoma to know that council members have been talking about the cemetery fund or the cemetery for a while, because it's a, it's a deep hole of 250,000, maybe, I'll be fair, with $200,000 that is bleeding. And I believe it's even more. And then, I do question the tank. Rental would go back to the cemetery? I don't understand. Wouldn't that go back to the city?
So, there's, there are two. There are two tanks, yeah. There's one tank that's not being used, but it really is surrounded by the cemetery. If anybody, you know, a person on the street was asked, they would say, oh, yeah, that tank's in the cemetery. There's another tank further up the hill that is in active use, the Norbaum Water Tank. That tank payment does go to the city. It's the lower one.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my only heed warning is, I will not be voting on this unless, you know, staff would change it up a little bit. I think it paints too rosy of a picture in something that has a major deficit. And, you know, I don't like, I don't like how it looks.
And so, just something to keep in mind as far as the revenues and expenditures that are reflected in some of the cemetery fund. There are significant purchases that the city makes when someone's doing a burial, and it flows through this fund. But the person who is paying for the casket and the engraving and all that, they do pay for it, but they pay it to the city, and then it gets transferred. And the expenditures come out of the cemetery fund. So, we just have one maintenance worker really that works on the cemetery. So, the costs that you see here aren't just our maintenance. It's also paying for things, purchasing, you know, items that end up being used at the cemetery that someone else pays the city for. So, there is revenue generated by the activities at the cemeteries. Does that make any sense?
Well, yeah, it still makes sense, but, I mean, I would like, I think it, I think it should show at least the $200,000 deficit, that I believe it's more, the cemetery.
Yeah, so I think for the perp, for the, yeah, so, Councilmember Cook, I think we, part of what we want to do is, you know, we've put $30,000 in the budget to really do a much deeper dive on the cemetery, which council's been wanting, and we completely support its staff. And that's one of the things we wanted to do, is really review, okay, what are, what were these loans? What need to be paid back? What does that look like? So, there's an analysis on that. There's really an analysis of what is the operational sustainability? What does it look like? How many more spaces do we have, not have? So, there's both a financial and an operational strategy that we've got to look at. There's a much bigger piece of this. This is really kind of a place.
Oh, and I understand, that's why I've been asking for it for the last six years.
Right, it's what you wanted, right.
But with that, I won't take up any more staff time. But I think that before we get to the budget, I would like to see a little bit more numbers in this, and I would like to see a little bit more detail showing that there is a deficit. To me, if I was just a citizen of Sonoma and I opened this up and I looked, I'd say, why is Councilmember Cook and Mayor Aggermonte, why are they talking about the cemetery like it has a huge deficit? It looks like it's almost, you know, you know, making money, but in all reality, it's a dark, deep, dark hole.
Okay, thank you.
That's great.
Just for Sue, on the words, I've never heard the word reservation used in connection with purchasing a, are we talking about a prepaid?
It was actually, it was a, yeah, I mean.
Are we talking about a prepaid burial plan?
That's what it was. I used the wrong term. Like, it's kind of a reservation.
I've never had a client say, like, yeah, we're going to call and get reservations.
Yeah.
Just like, yeah, just like any business, there's a whole different language in the world of cemetery, yes. All right, so at that point, if there's any other questions on cemetery water, otherwise, we'll shift to, I'll ask our Public Works Director to talk about capital improvement fund.
Okay. So, as mentioned in the beginning of the budget on page four in the City Manager's message, our local economy and daily life rituals depend on reliable infrastructure to deliver our water, circulate our vehicles and bicycles, protect our creeks, and prevent flooding in our streets. So, reinvestment in infrastructure, it's costly, but it's very necessary to live our lives. And if we don't invest and we defer to the maintenance of our infrastructure, it gets even more expensive. So, this year, we have a five-year capital improvement program, 2018 to 2023, or CIP. I'm going to go through it briefly, because you have a lot of information here in front of you. Just to talk about what a CIP is, it's a planning and budgeting document to support. Just to talk about what a CIP is, it's a planning and budgeting document to support our safe, healthy and vibrant community here in Sonoma and our investment in our public infrastructure. It's an important strategic planning document. It shows our future needs, just, not just our needs for this year and it reflects community priorities, some of which we would get input from council on to reflect appropriately in the CIP.
And just you are, where would you like in terms of the budget? So council can follow you.
So we are on page 105, thank you.
Yes, excuse me. There's also in the back of your budget, larger 11 by 17s of the spreadsheets, which are a little maybe easier for you to review as Colleen goes through it.
Okay, so the, the CIP, we presented the projects in the CIP in different categories. So we've got transportation projects to keep the community moving safely. We've got creeks and drainage projects to reduce flooding and protect water quality. We've got water projects, of course, which you've heard a lot about. And we have parks projects, we think parks make life better. And we have buildings and facilities, so these would be needs that exceed the basic long-term building maintenance needs that building official described. And then the cemetery, we just talked about, no cemetery projects this year. So as you go through the CIP document, in each category, there's a narrative describing the goals and accomplishments for that category. There's a description of the fund sources that fund those, that category's projects. There's a table describing all the projects in that category. And then each project has a data sheet that describes the project and the requested funding. Before you get to all those details for each category, there's a sheet describing, this is page 106 in my packet, that describes the different funding sources and the restrictions on use of those funds. So we couldn't build a new park amenity with our gas tax funds or our water funds. There's, those are restricted to transportation and water uses. And general fund is the one that is unrestricted and the other funding sources are all listed and you can see the restrictions on uses of those funds. There's a large table that has colors, many colors, that shows the projected funding sources for the first year of the capital improvement program, because that's what council would actually be acting on next week. And it shows each of the projects with funding requested in the next fiscal year, 2018, 19, and the sources of funds for those projects. And then as you get into it, it goes into streets and transportation projects and summarizes the funds there, describes accomplishments, goals, talks about the pavement lifecycle. Pavement's one of those things, if we don't keep investing in it, it declines fairly rapidly and once it declines, it's really, really expensive to get it back up. So it's important to keep investing in our pavements. And then we have some particular transportation projects that I'll highlight as we look at the projects individually. And I won't go through everyone in much detail, but just quickly, some of them you're very familiar with, the Chief Street Bridge Replacement Project, Fire Creek Pedestrian Bicycle Bridge. These are two federally funded projects. We're just working towards eventually getting to a position to build them. The annual slurry sale, you've heard us talk about in relation to SB1 funds, the new road maintenance and rehabilitation act gas tax funds. That's where council has made a decision, we'll direct those resources to keep our pavement maintained in next year and future years. The sidewalk inspection and repair program, we just finished some of that. You probably saw some of the work going on around the community. So that's a, a request for next fiscal year to keep that going, to be able to do design of a pavement rehabilitation project for construction a year out. Roadway safety improvement projects, we have a new report on roadway safety and we'd like to start doing some of the projects identified in that report this next fiscal year. And then a, a project that may relate to council goals, and this is one we're really looking, if this is a project that council's interested in investing in or not, Broadway streetscape enhancements and traffic circulation. And Broadway's the main entrance to Sonoma from the south. There's a lot of talk in the general plan about circulation element of the general plan about Broadway and how it could be configured. And then that whole intersection of Broadway and Napa, a lot of Broadway is taken up with a stacking lane in, for left turns onto east, or onto west Napa. So this, the funding requested in here, $75,000 of general funds would allow us to start a community conversation about what to do along Broadway. So that's an interesting project to think about and provide input on. And then downtown parking was mentioned already, there's been some work done on that and there's a request for $40,000 to move that forward. And hopefully some progress on the Casa Grande lot, but to end up eventually with a parking strategy and a plan that council could adopt. Then we do have a bicycle and pedestrian improvement plan, not asking for funding for projects this year, but acknowledging that if we look five years out, there are projects identified in that plan that we should think about funding in the future. So those are the transportation projects and we'll pause after each category and see if council has questions, wants to talk about them before we move on.
Can you just, for the city manager, reiterate what the options are for deciding on this? Didn't we say like some of it has to be approved now, but others of it we can do later?
Yes, yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. So this is the first time we've had a five-year plan. And what staff has done is we've captured those projects that are in the queue or things that we've heard from council and community that need to be, like you'll see in the drainage section, you'll see a part of something we heard about drainage on Brazil Street, okay? So what we've done is tried to capture what we know and then begin to lay out, some, some of these projects don't have any funding at all. Some are to be determined, but at least we can capture, we have a need. We're not capturing every need in the community, but we are capturing things that we think, you know, we should be trying to figure out how to get funding for. We are not asking council for you to approve the five-year plan next week. This, the five-year plan needs some broader conversation, but it, it, but the pieces are here and there's, I think there's time for us to work on this and I really want to thank Colleen and Kat and the Public Works team that put this together because we have a framework now. We have a five-year framework. What we want is authority for the 18, 19 to move forward. And then I think this becomes our tool as we're talking about projects over the next year and it will make sense to really, I mean, typically in agencies, I've had like a two-hour session just on the CIP or three-hour, just to kind of go through the five-year CIP. And there's also community conversations to have that we've not done yet. So this is kind of what I would call setting the table for really that, you know, kind of a continued use of this five-year tool, if that helps.
So which pa, yeah, it does. Which page in the binder address is 18, 19?
So 18, 19 is on page 107 and it's also the top sheet of your stapled packet. That's the blow-up, which makes it easier to see. And so what the city engineer just went through was the funding request in the transportation section. And as you can see, there's, there was quite a bit of general fund requests that were recommending us in the transportation. And then she was gonna move to briefly just do a high level of the next sections moving forward.
Uh, just to be clear, so we're talking about $579,000 from the general fund, gas tax, we're getting, SB1, we're getting, water fund, we've kind of already approved that, didn't we not? No?
No, that would be approved as part of this budget.
But we discussed it.
We discussed, we've discussed these correctly in a number of different ways.
Grant funds, so of the general fund, we're talking about 579?
Correct, of a total of 1.5 million and the total CIP for 18, 19, of which 579 would come from the general fund, correct?
Okay, just wanted to.
Yep, yep, no, thank you for that.
Make sure I'm thinking about the right thing.
Thank you for framing.
Anybody else ready? So page 125 has just an overview of creeks and drainage. We're not requesting any funding for these projects for the 18, 19 fiscal year, but they are described. So community members that, for instance, have approached the city about flooding on Brazil Street, and we have a description in here, we can look towards a future of funding a project there. We do have mandates under our stormwater discharge permit to reduce trash getting into the creeks from Sonoma. So there's several projects that would contribute to that effort. And so drainage projects, but not something that you have to worry about for the 18, 19 fiscal year budget unless you really wanted to bring something up and try to fund one of those this year. And then water capital projects, I'm not gonna get into details of these because you've heard a lot about them in the water rate study process. But these are projects that primarily came out of the water master plan. And they're, you know, again, described in detail in here. And then there's parks projects and on 147, there's a little description of parks and facilities capital projects and on 149, the parks capital improvement program. So several projects in here that would enhance different parks in our community. So the first one is the Plaza and Depot Parks Enhancements and Connectivity Plan or Project. So it would start with a community conversation and identifying, you know, not, it's not a master plan, we have two lovely parks, just to polish them up a bit and improve certain elements of the two parks, but in a way that they're identified and considered, not just, oh, we'd like to do this, we'd like to do that, but having a plan for these enhancements so it can be done in a coordinated way, both at Depot and at the Plaza. And also understanding those two parks aren't very far apart, but it can be challenging for people to get from one to the other, to also look at the connectivity between those two parks as part of a planning effort. So there's $50,000 of general fund requested to kickstart that program. And then looking ahead towards when the Prop 68 money that was mentioned earlier, the $200,000 that we expect to come to Sonoma every year, looking towards a future of potentially investing in Plaza and Depot Park with those funds.
First, I think that this is amazing because the way that we were budgeting before, it was always, it felt like a surprise every year as to like what we finally had enough pennies together to do. And then the way that this big chunk of money just kept getting pushed forward, it was hard to like even tell what was happening. So this, I think, is really awesome. It seems like it will make us more prepared and maybe competitive for grants because we are making plans. I would love to see something about recycled water in here, but I already mentioned that during our last discussion on the subject. I absolutely love the new parks section, because that is an air, I find it sort of mind-boggling that we don't, we haven't had a fund for the Plaza all along, but now we do. And I just think this is really helpful and there's a lot of projects that people do ask about, like, you know, like the pedestrian and bicycle bridge. And so now you can kind of see a little roadmap where it's going. So I really appreciate all the hard work. And for anybody out there who hasn't actually looked at the long budget, there are fascinating descriptions and pictures of all of the wonderful things that we will do.
Thank you.
Can I just hear maybe from Chief Sackett about the need for the gate at the veterans' building?
Jump ahead, but that's okay. So as you know, there is only one way out of the police department, which is on First Street West and that intersection down there is getting more and more complex. And I'm seeing an increase in our response times a little bit. Not significant and it fluctuates here and there, but it's something that you think of when we had terms with the fires. Having your primary public safety, you have one way in and out of here, doesn't make a lot of sense. We do have a, a key to the back gate at the vets' lot, but it's not practical for a deputy to, you know, responding to stop, get out of his car, unlock the gate, pull it, drive through, stop, get back out, lock the gate. And so it became a point of discussion that it'd be great if we had an alternative route out of here. And so the best way to do it was with an automatic gate. So that was the initial discussion. Then we were having some, a lot of pushback from, complaints from our neighborhood about kids that were using that, that parking lot on the east side for, you know, peeling out and doing donuts and just annoying people. And so it was always difficult for us to catch them because we had to drive all the way around and by the time they saw us coming, they were already gone. And so we thought, well, we might be able to solve two things with two birds with one stone, right? So if we can put up a, a fence along that eastern side on First Street East, a little four-foot fence, and there's two, there's two driveway cutouts. One, we would make a moving gate, so there'd always be two, like typically, as we provide anybody with their own lock, that they could, you know, manage that as they see fit. And then we would have an automatic gate for public safety access so that we would be able to respond if need be. So that's the concept of it. And then if there, the, the lot would always be available for people to use, but they'd have to access it off of First Street West as opposed to First Street East. And the good news is if people are misbehaving and they gotta come back out, they gotta come out right in front of the police department, so it's a little easier to catch them. So there's still some public outreach that we need to do. This was kind of a last-minute addition. I think it's important, I support it. We've gotten a quote from, it's a, it's a county-maintained property, of course, so we need to get their approval. They don't have any funding for it, so we were hoping some way we could figure out how to fund it through the city because it really benefits basically the city police services in terms of, and that, that side of the neighborhood in terms of not having so many people misbehaving up there.
That's great. I'm sure all the neighbors watching, any of them that are watching would be very happy to know that we're trying to do something to.
Yeah.
Help out with that, because I know it's been ongoing and really a problem over there.
Yeah, so and again, some point in public outreach, it sounds like the vet, the vets' groups that I've talked to, I haven't talked to all of them, but the, I haven't talked to any of them officially, but the individual veterans that I've spoke with all seem to be supportive of the program and the county is certainly supportive of putting a gate up there. So it just seemed to be, it was a smart thing to do, especially in terms of response times.
Does anyone have any questions?
Thanks.
Yep.
You know, Chief, it's interesting, these are not, you know, there are horrible things going on, on, on the world, but right in front of your house, this stuff can drive people crazy.
Yeah, yeah, it's interesting. I've, I've mentioned this before that, and I was gonna give you a, I'll give you a little preview of, of my next presentation, you're gonna hear from me, but one of the, the challenges for public safety always is, well, you know, fire or police for sure, because everybody loves fire department, is that if you, if you were to send out a public survey to a community, what was important to them? And you sent that same survey internally to law enforcement and there was a list of 10 things. I'm fairly confident, because we've seen it before, that the, the lists would be inverted between what the community thinks is important and what law enforcement thinks is important. Because we get more calls about barking dogs, noise, parking and traffic. We don't get any calls about the officer-involved shooting, we don't get any calls about the in custody death, we don't get any calls about the major rape case, we don't get any calls, because those things don't necessarily affect the general population, but they're really important things for us to keep our eye on. And so my, my statement to the staff has always been, we need to always look at the big things, right? Because those are big issues and no one else is watching them, drug run-in, you know, gun, gun run-in, you name that kind of stuff. We have to keep an eye on those, but at the same time, give enough time and energy to the little things that are so important to people because that's how we're judged. We're judged on how we, if we can resolve that neighborhood issue. No one ever called to say, hey, when are you gonna solve that rape case? No one ever called about that. But they did call about, hey, when are you gonna get my neighbor to quit doing X, Y, and Z? And so it's an interesting perspective when you, when you're always balancing, there's only so many resources and so much time. You have to always balance how to put those resources to the best use so that you can maintain public support, but at the same time, keep your community safe from the really big, big problems. So, sorry.
I just want to add, Chief Sackett, that's when the gate, before the gate was there, that's how we got through town.
Yeah.
And so I'm in full support of.
Yeah, so and they'll, they'll probably be, hopefully we'll get a lot of smart minds together and we'll talk about how to best utilize that space in terms of make sure we're not overlooking somebody who needed it or something that we didn't do. Such a matter of discussion and, and, you know, I think it'll be a really good addition, I do.
Thanks.
Thank you. So just to pick up where I was, because I jumped ahead a little bit and that's great, it was a great conversation. And there are a couple other park projects I just wanted to mention. There's a proposal to invest some general fund dollars into neighborhood parks, reinvest, reinvestment and maintenance to kick it off next fiscal year and then invest the Prop 68 funds, the balance of the Prop 68 funds into neighborhood parks going forward. So there's a sheet. So there's a sheet in there to think about, some overlook trail project, you know, that's going forward. This is basically carrying forward money that was budgeted last year as we go into construction. And, and then to, to the extent that we can figure out the ideal thing for Park Plaza, Plaza Park, recycling and trash receptacles and bicycle parking. Um, we have a fund request that really rebudgeting from, um, this year's funds to implement some of that. If in the planning process, we can figure out what to do there, we can actually build some things. Um, and then there's a, a small description of ADA improvements at Depot Park. We know that park is not fully accessible. This wouldn't give us enough resources to make it all fully accessible, but to, um, take some steps in that direction. And then the building and facilities, we talked already about the police emergency gate. And this is moving on to page one fifty-nine. We do have, um, Community Development Block Grant Funds that we'll be able to use in this eighteen nineteen fiscal year to do an ADA self-evaluation and transition plan. We do need to kick in about twenty thousand dollars of general fund to, to match that seventy thousand dollars of CDBG grant funding. Um, and then, um, the, the next project on page one sixty, the Corporation Yard Shower Facility Security and Drainage Project. Um, I feel pretty strongly about this one because I've gotten to know these maintenance workers over the last year and was shocked to find out. And I did give the mayor a tour for our Public Works Week barbecue, that there's no hot shower at the Corporation Yard. And the facilities are pretty minimal in terms of the amenities for the, the maintenance workers. So they're the ones out in the winter storms, keeping the town from flooding. They're responding to water main leaks and fire hydrants that get hit and often come back to the yard wet and don't have a place to take a hot shower, put on cold clothes, or to wash out the oil from poison oak when they're out maintaining the park. So anyway, so this would, um, provide for a design of a, um, facility that I think is appropriate for the maintenance workers that are taking care of the city. Um, the yard also doesn't have good security. So this would again provide for a design of a gate and some drainage improvements at the Corporation Yard. So that's the one there. And then the, um, the Vets Hall Parking Lot we just talked about. So it's
Can I just ask, are you thinking of multiple showers?
No, just one, one shower that could be used by a man or a woman that's accessible and has hot water.
Thank you.
Um, so, so that's a very brief overview of this five-year CIP. As you can see, it was a lot of work to put this together, I'm proud of it. Um, this wouldn't have happened except the city manager, when she hired me, made it clear we were going to have a five-year CIP. And so, um, so we do now and we can build on it as she mentioned, the foundation starting this year and looking towards future years. And keep in mind, as you hear about projects that the community needs, this is a, a great vehicle to get those projects in the queue, get some conversations going about the, around them, get them described and see how they compete with other, um, needs in the community for funding. Also want to thank Public Works Project Manager Catherine Wall. This would not have happened without her dedication and, um, talents at laying everything out beautifully and, and making it all happen. So, um, that's it.
Question? I'm wondering, we're going to spend, um, just because our funds are so tight. So we're going to spend, before we get the parks money, we want to spend general fund money on park stuff this year. Why is that better than waiting a year to get the money from the county?
So these are, um, project ideas for council consideration and with the general fund dollars especially, um, we'll invest however many general fund dollars the council thinks is prudent in whatever project you want to build.
No, I just mean, from your perspective, since you're putting this forward, why is it to our advantage to spend general fund dollars instead of waiting? What is the argument in favor of it?
Uh, because it allows us to do things during this next fiscal year and better position ourselves to make good use of those Prop sixty-eight dollars when they are flowing to Sonoma.
Does that mean they reimburse?
Like in what, in what way will we be in a better position to use the dollars?
Well, so it would give us a year to have a community conversation about Plaza and Depot Parks and what the needs are. We could do some things now, so the people that are enjoying the Plaza now could get the benefit of some of the ideas that are out there and not have to wait another year for those. Um, and it would also take steps towards having a plan. And then when we had funding, um, it, it, so you all know and I've come to learn that, um, the community is passionate about the Plaza. Um, any little thing that someone has an idea to do on the Plaza, someone else is going to have an idea about doing that thing on the Plaza. So in my mind, we really need to invest in developing a plan so that we've, we've vetted the ideas. People have had a chance to have input, develop some consensus around it and decide what exactly the bicycle parking is going to look like and where it's going to go. So we can actually build something.
So you see the funds, general funds being used for the Plaza and Depot Park this year being primarily dedicated to developing the plan?
For, for the, the, the one, um, budget description and request that, that is about the plan. And then to the extent that the plan was developed far enough to know what and where to build in terms of bicycle parking and recycling and trash receptacles on the Plaza, to have enough funding to implement that part of the plan.
So the plan, the making the plan is Plaza and Depot Park Enhancement and Connectivity Project? Or which, what is the words on here that, that are what you're talking about?
That, that, the one you just described is starting to work on a plan.
Okay, so the fifty thousand dollars is for making that, working on that plan?
Mm-hmm.
Let me just add two other things. So, um, one, at the time we put this budget together, we didn't know whether Prop sixty-eight would pass or not. So when it did pass, then we've added money for nineteen twenty. Um, and we've basically split that two hundred thousand, we put a hundred and fifty thousand into, and this is just kind of placeholder, a hundred and fifty thousand into Plaza and Depot for the next X years, and we put the other fifty into neighborhood parks, just as a placeholder. But that's a much broader conversation going forward. Um, I think as we look at, I mean, I toured our, all of our neighborhood parks with the Park Maintenance Supervisor about four or five months ago and we drove it all. Um, and as I look at even like two hundred thousand dollars a year, which will be great because we've never had dedicated money for parks. I think there's still going to need to be some general fund investment as well. Uh, we've got some, there's probably a couple of playgrounds that we need to do a complete playground enhancement. And those, a playground, a playground come anywhere from thirty to if they're the big ones, eighty, seventy-five thousand dollars. So, um, there's just a lot of deferred maintenance in our parks. Um, if we want to redo Grinstad or we want to put kind of a pretty brick wall against, around the wood, kind of recycling enclosure and make that bigger or something. I mean, that's going to be a significant amount of money. So I guess what we were seeing is, um, this was some seed money from the general fund. And I think one of the important pieces for this year is that as we put money into the CIP, it goes in and it stays there. Now, if council wants to reappropriate it back out, you can, but it's not every year we're not rebudgeting. Um, and I think that has been, um, one, I think it's really hard to look at your operating budget if you always have capital budgets in that are like this. And I think that's definitely happened like on our water budget. We were putting that two point eight million or, or two point four in the water budget for three years in a row. So to really see what was happening on an operating level gets confusing when you've got these capital swings. So, um, that's kind of a different answer, I appreciate, but it was a point I wanted to make when we're looking at the importance of having a five-year strategic plan. Um, you know, if council wants to, um, you know, tinker a little bit and reduce a little bit of money in some of the Plaza, because we will have Prop sixty-eight. But I still think that, you know, I'm hopeful that we can have a kind of a collaborative based process, um, develop some, some conceptual plans. And there may be some things that are frankly low hanging fruit, maybe that could be done sooner. Um, I mean, for example, adding more, more benches or redoing the, the, um, redoing our park benches and our tables. Those are probably fairly inexpensive things, they need to be done. And if we figured out generally what we wanted to do, those are even some things that could potentially be done within this, within this fiscal year that we could use some of this funding for. So I think it really, I think we need a subcommittee of council to work with, as we've talked about in goals. And we need to have that team be working with Public Works and kind of chew this through for how do we want to, you know, get some public input? And, and I think all of us have the interest of wanting a plan enough that we do this thoughtfully, but not overplan that we're just creating something that we're not moving forward. So I think we're looking for that sweet spot.
So these could be considered placeholders?
It's a budget, it is a placeholder and at least there's some funding for us to then, you know, be, to do something with and figure out, you know, what does it look like and what do you want to do?
And I think the placeholder comment really referred to the two hundred thousand dollars of, um, going into fifty thousand neighborhood parks and a hundred and fifty thousand towards Plaza and Depot. Um, the, the other, you know, that one sheet we looked at, that was the eighteen nineteen budget request. Of course, we're here talking to the council, looking for input on all of it, um, before we bring a budget to you for adoption. But then when you adopt that budget, that's how much money is budgeted to those projects. Those, those aren't placeholders, those are real budget dollars.
David?
I'll make a quick, Gary. Uh, to, to kind of add on to this, when I first got on the council, um, well, I think I, before I got on the council, I think it was, uh, Mayor Sanders at the time was trying to get council support, which never happened. It's probably too bad because when we're discussing this, um, is where there was going to be a wish list of like park benches. But even to go even a little bit further, it's something that, um, hopefully, uh, we can put in a budget maybe next year to, to create. There's people who would like to leave a legacy, um, like on Montini, if, if there was a bench. You get these supportive, um, projects that if somebody does want to purchase a bench in, in someone's name, you know, um, we don't like to have too many names on too many things, but it's just, it's like when you go to overlook, you'll see, uh, little, little plaques. But I always thought it was a great idea and I was really saddened that it never passed. And since I've been on the council, I've always kind of thought about it and it, it light bulb kind of went off. That's something kind of, um, I just want to throw out during this discussion.
Sure, so that could be part of a plan. Mm-hmm.
Yes, because it, not talking about redoing the bathrooms, but, you know, like a bench up on Montini that somebody could purchase. But the city is the one who is designing it and installing it.
So just to touch on that really quick, if I, if I may, um, we do have an informal memorial bench policy that we've been in, uh, involved in and, and we actually have quite a large waiting list on, on folks that are interested in purchasing memorial benches and, and being able to dedicate to their loved ones. We are looking into making it a formal policy and bringing that to council for further consideration at a future time. We just haven't quite gone there yet, but that is something in the queue.
So I think if there's no more questions, then that would include, conclude the CIP. So, um, I think at this point, council, um, if there are, let me just kind of step back. Um, at a high level, what staff has attempted to do here is to bring you a budget that allows us to respond to your goals um, so that we can move forward. I think that is also, um, recognizing some of the fiscal constraints we have and yet, um, continuing to invest in the town that we care about. Um, I do think that there's some pieces in this budget that haven't been here before. I mean, one, we've got a full five-year CIP. Again, we're only looking for a one-year approval, but a good tool for our future. Um, I'm pleased, I want to thank Sue for her hard work of actually putting in actuals to this budget. That's another thing that you, that has not been here for the past few years and I think is important as, as you all look at things from just policy decision makers to build a half. Um, so our, um, be happy to hear kind of feedback from council. I know this is a lot to absorb and I want to acknowledge that completely, there's a lot here. Um, and, um, happy to meet with folks individually, talk through more. Uh, the overall, um, plan, if council is comfortable, would be to take this forward on the twenty-fifth, um, for council to act on. Um, and again, remembering it's a budget. Um, if there's pieces of it that you say, I'm comfortable having you move forward, but let's push some, but some of these capital projects, maybe let's be, as the team works and the council members work on things, you budget it. But the actual, um, work plan and timeline is, is still going to be kind of worked through. Uh, so some of these things could be happening a little more in the second half, the actual spending of the money happening more in the second half of the fiscal year versus potentially the first half of the fiscal year. So with that, happy to answer any further questions and hear some thoughts from council members about how to proceed.
Are we going to do public comment again before we do?
Yes, so that was the other place I wanted to mention as well. So if you want to do public comment maybe and then go to council comments?
Yeah, so, um, so I'm happy with the, uh, work when you showed up at my house on Friday. I think it was Friday when you left this book to read over the weekend. Um, I'm, I'm very supportive of all the, all the, um, ideas and thoughts. And I think Kathy, you know, my, um, I'm constantly talking about Depot Park and the Plaza and it's something that's, uh, very dear to me. And I think we probably have, I don't think two hundred K a year is going to cover the parks. It's going to be more like four to six hundred thousand dollars a year if we really want to get them in the condition that, um, our community deserves and has paid for. Um, so I, I think it's a good start. Um, I like the idea of each, uh, uh, group, uh, Public Works, et cetera. Everybody has their own police department, fire has their own projects to work on. And I think to, uh, to serve this up, to give them the budget they need to work on, it'll be an incentive for all the people in those departments. So, um, I'm very supportive of all the work that's been done, thank you.
Just Mayor, Mayor Aggermonte, maybe, should we should go to public comment first, sorry, then, sorry. Is there any member, any other member of the public, Mr. Petlock?
Good evening, council staff. Um, a very nice budget, it looks really, really great. Um, the only, I, I could say a million things, but really what I would like to suggest is now that you have a five-year capital plan, that the council begin, uh, budgeting specific transfers, um, to the capital plan. Um, usually just regular amounts so that you're not only building a, a capital reserve, not just in the water fund, but generally like, uh, Mr. Edwards had suggested around parks. And, you know, years ago, there was a tax and lighting district that should have provided two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or so at that time, that went away. So all of that funding went away. So now we have this position where we have all this deferred maintenance in our parks and just kind of whenever there's some extra money, it kind of gets plugged into that. Um, but rather than that approach, just taking a, a measured and steady approach, you know, when times are good, maybe a little more money. When times are bad, maybe a little less money, but still making transfers to capital, maybe not spending all that money every year, but also kind of building up so that when there are larger things that come along, there is money there to, uh, cover those larger things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Petlock. Well, I don't think CNN, David Goodison, would you like to get up?
I'm good.
You've been here a long day. I'm going to close the public, uh, comment section. David?
Well, I'll go, uh, I got up at four o'clock, so if I sound like I'm a little drumming, it's probably because I am. But, uh, I did want to tell staff that this is a well put together document and I appreciate it. I'm, I, when it came to my door over the weekend, I was very impressed in reading through it and seeing that, uh, you know, staff is listening, you know, what the council's been asking for and different things. Um, I don't mean to beat up when I'm talking about the cemetery. It's just something that, um, I think sometimes, I'm not going to use the word smoke and mirrors because I don't believe that that's what we're trying to do here. Um, but sometimes to make something look a little bit better, so it just makes everybody feel good. But I think it's time that, you know, we take off the good feeling with the cemetery. And I would like to see that money, uh, the revenue go somewhere else. Um, but I'm one-fifth of the council, so, um, uh, my, my, my biggest point is I just think that, that, that's part that we shouldn't be sugarcoating because there's a lot of other projects that you can see that we should be, um, you know, spending money that there's enhancements that we could, um, you know, we could do. But we are on the right track with the cemetery, so you won't hear me for a while because I've kind of gotten what, uh, I think Sonoma needs as far as getting this whole, um, cemetery, uh, you know, taken a look at and all that. But I did want staff to know that I think you do a great job. Um, I know that we're losing, um, two of the individuals out there, you know, David Goodison and Brett Sackett. But, uh, you know, it's sad because the reason I'm bringing it up is we're losing our institutional knowledge and that's something that I've always said. But this document right here is what will bring it back, so, uh, I want to thank you for that.
Okay, um, well, we did receive this budget, which is a tremendous amount of work at the end of last week and it is a hundred and ninety-four pages long. So I don't know how anyone else did it, but I was not able to read the complete budget. I, today was, um, very helpful hearing from the different departments about the needs and the challenges and the funding requirements for the ongoing year. So that was a, it was educational and interesting, so thank you for that. I need to complete reading all of the detail of this budget prior to next Monday. Um, and if I have additional questions, I will ask you. And if I have additional questions, I will ask you. But it's obviously a tremendous amount of work. And in general, I will just say, and I understand that it's hard to get things ready, for a two-hundred-page-long, incredibly dense, numbers-based document, I, Amy Harrington, would need at least two weeks to fully read it. That, I mean, that's what I would need, even if it was like a great novel. Just because I have two children and a job, it would take me longer than three days to read a two-hundred-page novel. So I appreciate it, it's a lot of good work, I'm sure it will be fine, but pretty challenging to receive it with this limited period of time to consider it.
Again, I think that this, every year that I've been on the council, the budget has gotten a little bit better. And I think this is almost where our new city manager wants us to be. And I look forward to next year when we don't have all of these things happening at the exact same time. And, you know, I I even think that this better than in years past has reflected areas of value expected, expressed by the council, except I just think that the housing subject matter is getting short-changed. And if I remember correctly, I think last year we had set aside maybe fifty thousand. That was supposed to be maybe something strategy or just getting started on the initiative. And then maybe it got morphed into the accessory dwelling unit fee waiver during, after the fires. But that, something happened there. And then, but now this year, we're having twenty thousand for housing strategy and education. And I just don't think that's enough. And there's, you know, considering that we don't have a whole lot of money and it's going to take really careful planning. And I look at what, you know, Santa Rosa's doing with forming an enterprise district and, you know, using creative funding plans for what they're doing. And I think it's going to take the same thing here and it's going to take investment on our part to be able to consider these. And like I see in the notes, it talks about the Housing Trust Fund, but I don't know how that's going to get funded. And then it talks about community workshops, which a lot of people have been asking for town halls. But then, you know, I think that the council ourselves, there's just so many things that are being done in the world in very small spaces that I think we need to look at. And it will cost money and take time and someone who's an expert on this to be able to point us in the right direction. And that's on both sides, both, you know, strategies for putting together revenues, to do, you know, government-subsidized affordable housing. And then on the other side, with the market rate and figuring out, you know, what are people doing these days to convince developers to build what they want and going into the general plan, you know, how, what what exactly do we need to be planning for? So I think that the allocation for housing-related, particularly strategy and expertise needs to be increased. But I do think that the rest of the budget is, I'm very comfortable with it. And I appreciate all the hard work. And I don't know, we have three meetings in seven days. We all knew that June was going to be crazy pants, so I think that when we got this was fine. And I'll be happy when June is over and we can all take a nap.
Maybe just one thing on the housing piece, since we're speaking about that. You know, so far, I believe, I'll ask Mr. Goodison, in terms of the accessory dwelling units, the fee rate, the fee waiver program, I'm not sure that we've, I don't know if we have any or one or something so far. So that may be something that the Housing Subcommittee could review. And maybe that that amount, again, it's been almost nine months, that amount may go down and that would create some additional flexibility. That's kind of what was in the back of my mind, but I'll turn it to Mr. Goodison.
Well, it's a reimbursement program. And so it's only payable upon, you know, a building permit getting finalized and someone submitting, you know, a request for the money. And we've publicized this and there's been, you know, in terms of just interest in it, there's a lot of interest in it. So I do expect that we're going to be paying out on this program and that it's going to be a successful program. But that said, just the level, although we are seeing an increased number of second units come forward, whether as a result of that program or for whatever other reasons, changes in law for ADUs, it is very unlikely that we're going to be using up all of that money. So we can come up with an assessment of that to see just what's left over that might in turn be used to assist with other housing programs.
So I think Kathy, you and I spoke and we thought maybe marketing or outreach or something, you know, to something more. And so am I hearing that there may be people out there, but because they're still going through the work, wouldn't they come forward for permits? So there may not be anyone out there, but.
Yeah, so I think what we'll do is between now and Monday, we'll do a little update and send council an update about kind of what it currently looks like. And we'll look at the thirty thousand that was reserved and is that, you know, does it, is projecting like what we know now? Does it look like that's all going to be used or is there some capacity? And then we can look at the overall timeline in that program. So there might be some wiggle room in there to put some additional funding back. We can also look at additional, kind of where we end up at year end. So, but we can talk more about housing too.
Right, and I love flow charts, so maybe the people could look at a flow chart. Here's this dirt, and then there's this flow chart that shows the shovel. So maybe that's, you know, just something like that. I really appreciate, I can't tell you how much, how much I appreciate. This was really a grown-up job, really, it's so professional. I just am so, I'm so amazed. As I said, you know, I have my my common concern that we get in material, get material and then it's presented in a different way. That's a problem for me and maybe it's just my problem, I don't know. But I, and I, you know, that was a lot, it was a lot to read and in that short bit of time. But I really appreciate, I know it's so difficult, I hated these things to prepare, but I think we've learned an awful lot. And I'm looking forward to the cemetery issue coming back to us, not being there soon. But I mean, just, but so I'm.
I think Sue is taking reservations.
But I just think this is really interesting and I hope people actually looked at this, watched this program, and you know, they can refer back to it. So I think it's wonderful, I appreciate my colleagues, all the work that they've put into this. And, you know, I think there is an answer for housing, but it's not done here tonight, so we'll see. Thank you so much, I guess I'll adjourn at this moment, thank you.
Sorry, I just want to say, I just want to say thank you to the team. And it's, it takes a full team to put stuff together. I also, so, and I also want to thank Lori Decker was part of, came in and helped with some part-time assistance. It was very helpful. But I also want to thank council because I think, again, you gave us the policy direction of where your priorities were and what you wanted to see, and that shaped what we put in this budget and made it a lot easier to kind of craft and put together so we can go do some good things next year. So I just want to say thank you to you and thanks for your patience. The next, the next couple, next week, we've got, you know, three meetings in a mo- in a week, and that's Herculean. But we're going to get some stuff done and start with a little bit, hopefully have a clean slate for July. So thank you both, all of you, for your time.
And I apologize, but we did dedicate this evening to Ed Kenny. You know, I'm so sorry, but he's, he was my kind of guy. And so I appreciate just knowing him, and he used to visit us all the time. I think he said mean things to us sometimes, but boy, I love that guy. Thank you, everybody.